Okay, everyone, can I have your attention, please? The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Can please, everyone, stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We've got a big crowd here tonight. So just to start off, I'd like to announce that the town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. I believe, as the town council secretary had mentioned, the room in the other room is also an overflow view room, so you can view the meeting if you did not anticipate speaking tonight. You can, if there's more room there, I certainly welcome anyone to go over there just to watch the meeting. I do want to start off with a few condolences this evening. We did last a number of veterans in the town since our last meeting. First, I want to extend condolences to the family of Donald Sworss, who served in the U.S. Navy during the Vietnam era. He passed away on February 12th. I do like to mention a little bit more about Don, because I knew him quite well in my whole life. Don was a longtime resident of the town. He was a longtime Lions Club member. All the decorations that you see on the common were mostly made by him. And he's done a lot over the years for the town through scouts and through other service projects, so I just want to mention that about Don, because he did a lot. I also want to extend sympathies to the family of Dexter McDonald, U.S. Army. During the Korean era, he passed away on February 14th. John Sype, U.S. Navy veteran. During the Vietnam era, he passed away on February 18th. Thomas Locke, served in the U.S. Air Force during Grenada, passed away on February 20th. And Herbert Magel, U.S. Army veteran, during the Korean era, he passed away on February 24th. Can I please have a moment of silence for all those veterans and their family members Thank you. All right. So to start off, we have approval of minutes from our previous meeting on February 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval? Mr. Loretty, any questions on those minutes from any councils? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see. Announcements from the presidents. I have a couple of things I'd like to state before we move forward. First, I would actually like to announce the start of a fundraising effort to construct three flagpoles in front of the Academy Building. This is being led by Lisa Bazell Curly, who's here tonight, I believe, and I'm sure will elaborate in a little bit. But she will be selling engraved bricks at $100 each to be placed around the edge of the extended hardscape in front of the fountain to help cover at least half of the cost of the construction, so hoping to raise $10,000 for that project for approximately $20,000 price tag. More details will be coming on Facebook, I'm sure, and I thank her for leading the fundraising efforts on this project. And obviously, with the large crowd that we see here tonight, I know many of you are here for the continued discussion of the resolution on tonight's agenda. And if your intention during Citizens Open Forum is to speak about it or against it, please let me announce now that the intention of the sponsors of this resolution is to make a motion to table it at this time. I'll let the councils elaborate on their reasons for this action when it comes up later in the agenda. But for those that are here to speak about that, I just wanted to let that be known, if that makes a difference on whether you want to speak or not. So, that being said, I do not have any proclamations, so we will move to Citizens Open Forum. I will start off by first saying that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the comment period. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And again, looks like based on the size of the club, we'll be enforcing the statutes of our council meeting that if you are not from the town of Bridgewater, we will not let you speak tonight for the fact that we needed a six-hour notice if you wanted to speak tonight, and I would just like to see our Bridgewater residents be heard here tonight. So with that being said, if you'd like to come up and speak, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to, please keep it to three minutes, if you can, please. A little shorter, if you can, because obviously, we've got a lot of people here tonight. So I will open up. Please come on up.
How you doing? Sean Kennedy, 487 Summer Street. I know, Mr. President, you just said that you're going to table that motion. I would like the council to just vote it down entirely. I think it's virtue signaling, even with the amendments. It's kind of littered with a bunch of language that a lot of the townspeople don't agree with. It's littered with bipartisan language, and as a nonpartisan body, you shouldn't be voting on those issues. A second topic of concern is the emergency order to establish a new voting procedure. After investigating what ranked choice voting was and running it by this, it's not a ranked choice voting system. Just because you rank people to vote on them, it's not ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting is a very specific process. You don't weigh the candidates you're voting on, and since it's coming through as an emergency order, I think something like that deserves a lot more discussion. It's also an inverse count, which creates more confusion, so I don't really agree with that either. Whatever's voted on, it should be very clear and obvious as to how it's going to work. If you want to do runoff votes, runoff rounds, things like that, that might make sense for the town, it might make sense for the council, but doing it this way, instituting something that really isn't what it claims to be, I don't think is something that we should be implementing. So with that said, I appreciate you having me up to speak. I took your advice, Mr. President, and I'm going to be running for District Three to be involved, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Robert Joseph Carey, 5 Fernwood Circle, Bridgewater. I'm a Libra. That doesn't mean anything, I'm a Libra? No, it's okay. I've been here for five and a half years. I love Bridgewater. Ninety-nine percent of the things about it, I love. I just wanted to talk about two different things quickly. For the past five years, every year, I've come up and spoken to someone and about all of the commercial vehicles, overweight sand and gravel, rock that go down High Street, that come down 106 to Route 18 in East Bridgewater, cross and go through East Bridgewater Residential, down to High Street, make a left, all residential, down across that bridge that we just spent a lot of money on being fixed and everything, and then down through all residential, and sometimes, I'm at High Pond, even sometimes, down to the end to Plymouth Street and make a dead man's turn. I drove track the trail for 35 years. Now, they usually cut down Mill Street there. I'm wondering, since that is a town road, and Route 104 and Route 106 are town-state roads, that town roads are being destroyed by overweight vehicles that are doing nothing but cutting through there, through trucking. I'm not talking about delivering to a site there, I'm talking about nothing but through trucking. That's that. I've said this for five years up there. Here I am, for my first time, saying something in front of all of you.
Just to let you know, we passed legislation to limit trucks on High Street and Hayward Street.
Thank you very much. That's good news. One other thing, the center of town. People, I guess, can't, don't realize what a stop sign or what the word "yield" means coming to, from Diddleborough, I mean Middleborough. Did I say Diddleborough? Middleborough, up to the center of town, they fly right through that stop sign, or coming, right by here, or coming by the backside, coming to there, and with traffic coming, on coming, from north, coming south. And I see people continuously go through red lights there. If we had some police enforcing laws about stop signs and yielding and flying in that rotary center of town, that might help a bit. I've seen so many people fly through the red lights there and just miss not one car, three or four cars through a red light. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that. Please come on up, yes. Name and address, please.
My name's Jill Sheridan, I'm a Bridgewater resident, Pleasant Street. I'm a mom of four, longtime educator, small business owner in town. I want to talk to the folks who are upended about passing the revolution, the resolution affirming that Bridgewater is a welcoming community that values diversity. If the argument is that this would somehow open the town up to be a sanctuary city, that fear has been shown to be utterly false in, like, misrepresenting the reach of a resolution, and I think the people circulating that know that. That's not how resolutions work. A lot of misinformation and fear tactics are being used, this petition that only requires people to use their first name to sign it, so if you go on the change.org, it looks like at least 40% of the people aren't even from Bridgewater. If your argument is that we should fear federal funding being cut for making the declaration that discrimination nor intolerance will divide us, I'd say we would be cowardly to even turn away from those values. If we value those things, we value them, whether we're being bullied, whether people using fear tactics or for financial gain. If those are our values, those are our values. If your argument is that, as Councilwoman McGrath stated, we don't need a resolution to affirm that Bridgewater is a welcoming community because we already know that we are, I'd say that argument is cartoonishly poor, and ask that you listen to the lived experiences of your residents. My own son was called the N-word for the first time in school when we moved here when he was 12. Personally, I've had threats and lies spread about me, I know what people say, and it's not true. I know what happens to people in this town who speak out, and I encourage you all, which I've sent to all the counselors, to read the summative report of a community listening session conducted by our university, DICE and BCCR, that highlighted Bridgewater citizens' experiences with discrimination, and it, you know, clearly illustrates room for improvement, and we're moving in the right direction with this resolution, and I'm not sure when diversity and equity became words that trigger fear and anger, but like it or not, you know, change is coming, you can't erase people's experiences, and I ask that you would use this as an opportunity to assert our shared values. And refusal to do that, I think, is basically, it's simply cowardice, and it's not a time to abandon our values. So the same people who are, you know, upset about this being a waste of time are the ones wasting everyone's time and forcing a conversation on something that's already been passed and been in the lobby of this building for years. So, you know, I hope we can move forward as a community, and if you are already a welcoming community, you should have no issue with the town affirming that. It has no impact on federal funds or anything like that, and that's completely misrepresentative of what a resolution is, and everybody in this room, I know all the counselors know it, and everyone else in the room should know that, too. You know, it's a straight-up lie, but that's going to impact anything like that, and even if it did, I would hope that Bridgewater would be, you know, a little bit better than that and not, you know, don't do the cowardice thing and just, oh, we're afraid to say this because federal funding might get pulled. Like, who would we even be to do that, so?
Thank you, Jill.
All right. Thank you.
Come on up, please.
My name's Samantha Felt, 457 Main Street. Mind me reading off my phone. So I would like to also make a statement regarding the previous resolution, the resolution affirming Bridgewater as a welcoming community for all. I understand you said that it's going to be tabled, but I think it's a really important resolution. It's clear from community reaction that many residents have a problem with this resolution. Many are claiming that it's DEI and woke, and that Bridgewater should not be reaffirming these values or declaring itself a sanctuary city. I would encourage anybody to point to me where it actually says DEI or claims Bridgewater to be a sanctuary city in this document, because I've looked it over multiple times, and for the life of me, I can't find those words anywhere. In the federal government currently, executive orders are being signed to promote discrimination against transgender individuals as well as heavy discrimination against immigrants. While this anti-immigration legislation alleges to target criminals, a consequence of this is that legal immigrants will experience a heightened level of discrimination within their community due to the public perceptions of them. That's why this resolution is so important. While it does not claim Bridgewater as a sanctuary city, it encourages inclusion within the community, and it will help people from marginalized communities feel a little bit safer. As a queer woman, the United States is a fearful place currently, and knowing that the town that I live in officially accepts me for who I am is a small solace. I understand that people may have different opinions, however, being able to accept people for who they are, no matter their differences, is integral to human connection. The golden rule is, and has always been, to treat others how you'd like to be treated. Just because this resolution affirms that people of differing backgrounds than you will be treated with kindness, that does not mean that you will not be treated with kindness. Equal rights for marginalized groups does not mean less rights for you. The attitudes and mindsets that should not be accepted are those of needless hate. It's important to keep in mind that you cannot ignore a group of people away. No matter how you feel, queer folks, people of color, immigrants, and any group that differs from you, they're always going to exist, so why not just accept that? It's also important to keep in mind that this resolution physically changes nothing. In the same way that the flag is symbolic of freedom, this resolution is symbolic of equality. It paves the way for Bridgewater residents who may be part of minority groups to feel as if they are accepted by their own town. I understand that people have many of their own opinions concerning equity and inclusion, but you should be willing to accept your neighbors for who they are and live with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, come on up. That's Donna.
Good evening. John Donna, 261 South Street. I would like to speak in regard to the resolution that was tabled, specifically the wording that speaks to the immigration status. The reason I'd like to talk about that is, most of us were at the budget meeting at BR approximately a month ago, and the head of the teachers' union got up and told everybody that, really, we're looking at classroom sizes that are really 33 students in a class right now. The teachers are doing all they can, but they're overwhelmed, and the students are suffering for this, too. And I know the school committee, Mr. Pitts-Gibbon came in and said, the teachers are burning out because these classroom sizes are so big. And to send an open invitation that we're open for open enrollment here for people that aren't even residents, I think that we should at least take care of our, we're not doing any service to our teachers or our students. I think we need to take care of our situation right now in-house, take care of the situation at BR, get our classrooms down to size first, before we send out any invitations to nonresidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donna. Please come on up.
Hi. Elizabeth Sharp, 1000 South Street. I'm here tonight to speak about the devastating state of our town's school budget. I know you're all aware of the major issues with our class sizes and underperformance, so I won't waste more of our time talking about that issue tonight. Tonight, I'd like to implore you to help our town work towards the solution. I appreciate you all taking time out of your schedules last week to meet with Bridgewater and Rainham, both committees with the school budget, to look for things that we can do to help fix the problems. At last week's meeting, I was pleased to hear you talk about the initiation of a subcommittee with members from all three groups to explore the idea of an override to fix our schools, and in particular, hire more classroom teachers for our first, second, third graders who have 30 to 33 kids in their class. I know there's a lot of chatter in town, saying, well, it's just a mismanagement of funds issue, but we need to remember the hard facts, that our per pupil expenditure for Bridgewater-Rainham is about 10th from the bottom for the entire district. So that needs to be thought about before we say, well, they're just misusing the money, when the facts are, we're starting with money less than all of the other towns when you think about how many students we have in our district. So I urge you to take action to get this subcommittee assembled as soon as possible and begin productive conversations that both towns in the school committee feel comfortable with to bring to the townspeople to let them vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Christopher Riley, I live on Nolan Park. I'll be very brief. As far as the DEI thing, I agree with the gentleman seated behind me, it's virtue signaling, it's a waste of time. We have bigger fish to fry in this town. We literally have teachers on their off time coming in and begging for money. We've got parents and teachers, parents...
What's that? Guys, please, please, order, please, or we'll clear their room, please. Thank you.
We have parents and teachers standing in picket lines begging for money for the school systems, and we're talking about silly resolutions, non-tangible things, okay? As far as the flagpoles, $10,000, if you can't raise all of it, don't put it up. The Stars and Stripes, the POW flag, and the state flag, it's all we're required to fly. Until we can afford to pay it out of cash to put more flagpoles up for inclusive flags, or do we want to fly, then we don't need them. That's all I have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Kelly Haley, 5 Jacqueline Way. I'm here to ask the town council to use a common sense approach when looking at the town budget and expenditures. Most of us are struggling to pay our bills with the increase in utility bills, thanks to our wonderful governor, and the general cost of living that has gone up exponentially. Local businesses are barely making ends meet because no one has any expendable cash. I'm sure most families have cut the fat out of their budgets to pay these increases, since this is the responsible thing to do. I know we have cut anything that is not a necessity as a family. I would ask the town council to do the same. Do we really need another $25,000 flagpole? I'm glad to hear that we're trying to raise that money, but we should be raising all of that, as, we shouldn't be paying for that out of the town. We have streets we can't drive on, water we can't drink, our schools are busting at the seams clearly, and a downtown building project that actually seems insane with the major issues we're already facing as a town. We'd like transparency around the budget and where our tax money is going, and we'd like to see the town council start to address these fundamental issues and maybe not spend so much time on the resolution. Really, we have one hanging downstairs. I don't know why we're spending so much time on it. It was good to hear Mr. Loretty talk about the grants that are available from the state to address water issues, but why haven't these already been applied? Many towns around us, as Mr. Loretty said, have already gotten this funding. Why have we not put these in already? How much is the water project and the school override going to cost individual taxpayers? Some of us need to decide if we can stay in this town or have to move due to the high cost of living here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak, please?
Ashley Mallard, Grange Park. Thank you for this time. I just want to acknowledge that the teachers, along with a great group of parents, some of them behind me, have organized two pickets in the last month, very successful in the center of downtown Bridgewater as well as in Rainham on Friday, with over 100 people in attendance at both events, and these are including grandparents, these are including children, all ages, teachers, and ESPs. And I just wanted to thank everyone publicly for participating. I want to speak to a few things. Number one is the resolution, not the resolution, a resolution of, let's come to a solution about the schools. That's it. That's all you're going to hear me talk about? That's what you think, but you're not. I want my kid to drink good water, and I want my students to drink good water in town. Tell me what the number is. You need me to picket outside so I can get money for my town to have fresh water? How much does Vernon's Well cost? Tell me. I don't see any of these numbers, I don't see any groups coming up with these numbers. Tell me which town, which, give me a list of every bad road in Bridgewater. I want the list from worst to best, and then tell me how the highway department comes up with that, and tell me how much that's going to cost. I know it's not cheap, but the town needs to hear the money upfront, because Mr. President Perry suggested that you can't, you got to have some education. Well, I need you to organize those groups to provide that education, and I'll surely stand by you if you need me to help in that resolution. But I also want to say, do not be distracted by some of the things that you're hearing in town. Do not be swayed that this is too hard to overcome. Do not be scared to speak up, and I know that you all don't want to speak up on Facebook, and I will do it for you if I can, but there's only so many voices that will come at you. There's only so many, because the amount of text messages, the amount of people that are DMing me, the amount of people that say they don't want to speak up, but they like what I'm doing and they like what I'm saying, and they're watching these videos, it's out there. I have people calling me from other towns now, trying to see how to do it, okay? I'm making phone calls more than just asking our own town to pay up. I'm spending my time, my personal time, calling every single center on the Ways and Means Committee. The chief of the Ways and Means had no idea about this problem, but I have a meeting next week set up with someone, okay? These are the actions that you need to make, and I'm not calling on behalf of just my 550-plus members of the BRA, I'm calling as a mom. They want to listen to me. This is not a lobbyist move. Trust me, the MTA's not, they're standing behind me and I can, I can use them, but this is just me making a phone call on my cellphone, like all of you can, and I encourage you to do that. I'm asking, what would the total number be of if we needed to support the water, the schools, the budget?
Thank you, Ashley. Come on up.
I'm going to read from my phone, so...
Name and address, please.
Michelle McLeod, 989 High Street. Sorry, I'm nervous. So I don't know how many of you guys have kids in school, but I have two. So I'm going to give you, parents, what I hear from my kids. You know, Mr. Powers said, it's great, the morale is great. It's not. Go to the middle school, ask any of those teachers, ask any of those kids. My seventh grader comes home, there's no heat in several of the classrooms, no heat in the winter, so they're moving classrooms. They can't find substitutes, so teachers are out. They're in the auditorium, sitting with other classes, sometimes three classes, three periods a day, because that's how many teachers are out. Do I fault the teachers? No, they're tired, they're frustrated, they're exhausted. The kids in middle school today were in elementary school during COVID, when everything shut down. They're not normal middle schoolers. They're behind socially and academically, so we need to do something. Both my kids were impacted by last year's budget cuts. Seventh grade lost one whole team. Those kids are in classes from 20, with students of 27 to 31 kids, okay? That's a lot of kids. In my seventh grade class, seventh grader came home and said, we got a new student, he doesn't speak English, he speaks this language. They paired him up with another student who speaks the same language to translate. We're asking students to translate. This isn't a unique thing, because I've heard multiple middle school parents say this has happened to various students. Are we paying these students to be translators? Are we expecting these students to be translators for other students? They're there to be educated. In second grade, they're learning to read, going from learning to read to reading to learn. We removed one of those teachers. So this year, instead of 24 kids per class, they have 28. Well, every time I go in that Mitchell Elementary School, those kids are happy, those teachers are excited. At what point are those young teachers going to be tired, because they have so many kids that they're trying to teach, trying to connect with? This is a real problem, and I know we have lots of problems in the funding and everything else, but as a council, you need to understand what the parents are hearing, what we're listening to, and how we feel. And if you don't have kids in the school, you might not know. I can't tell you what it's like in the high school, and I can't tell you what it's like in the Williams', but I can tell you what it's like in the Mitchell and in the middle school, and that's what my kids are coming home and telling me about. And that's what's really sad and frustrating, because we need to do more for them, for all our students. And, you know, maybe we need to ask the state for more money for English language learning, because our students should be translating for other students. That's not their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak, please?
Kimberly Burke, 14 Heather Lane. Town council members, I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of the welcoming resolution that was recently tabled, and urge you to vote in favor to ensure that residents, visitors, historians recognize that Bridgewater stands for equity and against injustice, for inclusion, and against exclusion, for respect for all community members, and against intolerance. Recognizing our diversity, it's a declaration to the world of our shared values. Unfortunately, it has become clear yet again that there's a small vocal segment of our community who find tolerance, justice, and equity as ideals incompatible with Bridgewater and unworthy of acknowledgement. Recent local public social media posts immediately after the last town council meeting berated the BCCR as insufferable, questioned the need for the resolution, with one person eventually creating a change.org petition. The comments criticizing... petition. The comments criticizing BCCR and the town resolution ran the gamut from feeling sad at the decline of our town, and that our town has more important issues rather than this emotional nonsense, as if acknowledging civil rights and diversity was both disappointing and preventing the town council from their duties. Even a previously failed town clerk candidate with a history of making racist comments stepped into the fray to provide false election information regarding the town's results of the 2024 presidential election to suggest a mandate against woke nonsense. For the record, there was only a difference of 48 votes between the top two candidates. This, percentage-wise, was the fifth lowest Trump margin in the state and hardly a mandate. My fellow citizens have a right-
Please, let her speak, please.
- reclaiming my time. My fellow citizens have a right to their opinions, but not their own facts. The change.org petition to rescind the resolution is based on false narratives, far-right talking points that utilize classic what-aboutism, and emotional culture war propaganda. That petition should be dismissed for what it is, an attempt to disparage Bridgewater residents who seek a more welcoming town in order to redefine Bridgewater under a banner of intolerance. Those of us in this meeting are less than 200 yards away from the Tory House, which was a stop on the Underground Railroad. Escaped black slaves from southern states were hidden in the basement of the Tory House from slave catchers, looking to retrieve humans they considered property. Now, more than a century later, the struggle to expand and acknowledge civil rights for communities of color, women, LGBTQ+ people, immigrants, and other marginalized groups continues and is facing renewed backlash on the national level and in this town. I strongly recommend passing RFY25007.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak? Please come on up.
Hi, Casey Rodriguez, Janeway. I am a mother of children in the school district, and I am also a special education teacher at the high school, and I've seen a lot of chatter on Facebook the past several days about using BSU volunteers as a potential solution to our budget crisis, and I just want to formally ask everyone to please move on from this idea. It will not work for so many reasons. The first of which is legalities, who is allowed to support our children in the classroom. Second of all, you know, the requirements to get licensure, and finally, just the reality that nobody wants to work for free. And in addition to that, our ESPs, who it was suggested could be replaced by these volunteers, are irreplaceable and indispensable. I have four ESPs working with me in my substantially separate classroom. We started this school year with 18 students, which is significantly beyond comparable programs in other towns, and it's been my toughest year yet, and I would not be standing here as an employed teacher at BR if I did not have those ESPs working by my side every day. So I just want to formally stop entertaining this as a solution to our problems, because I assure you, it is not. Second of all, another thing that I see a lot across Facebook is, where can the schools get creative, and how can they continue to do more with less? That's the same question that we've been asked for well over the decade that I've been in teaching, and the answer is, we are as creative as we can possibly be, and we cannot, we cannot continue down that path. So I would like to ask, who else in the town is able to get creative? Where can others get creative? Because we are at our limit. So, you know, where else across the town and the services and the other things that we fund, can we do more with less? Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak? Please come on up.
Hi, my name is Christina Amendola. I live on High Street, and I hope you guys will forgive my hastily written notes here. I'm up here because of our resolution that's on the table for our community. I'd like to bring up a couple of points. One of these is that, all I could find on this claim that it would make Bridgewater a sanctuary city is from a Twitter account called the Anti-Wu Coalition. If that's where you're getting your news from, and that's what you're basing your changes on your government from, then I think maybe we should reevaluate where we're getting our facts from. And I think it's very dangerous to take these facts as, take these lies as facts. They're not from Bridgewater. They're only concerned with Boston. Why they're even involved here is beyond me. This resolution, as far as I know, has been here in the past for a number of years, and very little time is spent, I believe, passing it. So the only time we're really spending here on this resolution is coming from people who do not want to pass it, which, if you want to waste your time, I guess, fine, but that doesn't change the fact that it's been around for a little while and passed with no problem, as far as I'm aware. It does not make Bridgewater a sanctuary city. There's a lot more involved to make a city a sanctuary city than just a resolution. A resolution, as far as I am aware of, is more just like a statement and opinion of the town, and why the town would not want to be seen as welcoming is beyond me, and not wanting this to pass kind of sends a signal, whether, you know, your reason is, we don't want a virtue signal or not. It's not about virtual signaling. It's about telling our community and our state that, yes, we are a community, yes, we stand together, and yes, we protect the rights of our fellow men. We don't have to pick this resolution over any of these other issues. We can debate on how to solve our problems as a town, as we should, and come up with solutions that benefit everybody. That's what a community does for each other, and that's what we need to do. But we can have both. We can have the resolution, and we can solve the problems that have been brought up here. It's not an either-or situation. And lastly, I'd like to remind the town that diversity is responsible for the existence of this country. Literally. People from all over the world come here to live in our country, our country, our little young revolutionary country that stood up and said, "Hey, you know what? We don't like you, Britain. We don't like you, monarch. We're going to create our own way." And from then on, we have been a country of immigrants, diverse. I can guarantee you that there is no one here in this room that is simply one race or ethnicity over the other. We are all children of diversity, and we need to remember that when we're looking at this resolution. We can thank diversity for the existence of this country, so I would like people to remember that. And I thank the council for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak?
Christina Jemian, 221 Aldrich Road. On behalf of BCCR, Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, I would like to thank those counselors who created and proposed and supported the welcoming resolution. We appreciate you and your moral courage. We know that this comes from a deep commitment to justice and to the town. You have demonstrated that you value all the people of Bridgewater. We regularly attend town council meetings and have heard many discussions regarding the challenges facing our town in terms of infrastructure, housing, and schools. We acknowledge that our focus must be on these problems, but affirming a welcoming community need not take away from addressing those issues. There has been concern expressed about seemingly empty symbolic versus action, symbolism versus action. Town meeting proceedings often entertain symbolic actions, such as saluting or pledging allegiance to the flag, remembering deceased veterans, as we did this evening, embracing the POW MIA flag, and recognizing our student, athletes, and scouts, all symbolic gestures that make up the heart of a community. We believe that it is possible to have action and symbolism together. That's why we encourage the counselors to vote for this resolution, which apparently is going to be tabled now. We understand that being a counselor is a difficult and demanding position, needing to address so many concerns, and we are sorry that some of you have experienced negativity and hatred from the sometimes welcoming citizens of Bridgewater. As always, BCCR will work with town counselors and the community to make Bridgewater a great town. Once again, we thank you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else? Come on up.
Keith Beal, 10 Fields Crest Drive. I'm not here tonight as a part of any organization or any group. I'm here as a citizen and as the father of a son who's part of a transgender community. I love our town. I think I've shown that in the 30 years that I've been here with what I've tried to do and be a part of this. I love my son, so obviously, whenever anything is done that might support him and what he deals with on a daily basis, I'm going to be in support of. But I'm not fooled to think that the passing of this resolution and/or the failing of this resolution is going to impact what he and a lot of us feel. I never knew hate until my son introduced himself to me. Not once in my life did I know what hate was until that happened. And I became his ally, and I became his father. And as a father, when your child is feeling hate, when your child is having rights taken away from them, you want to do whatever you can do and support whatever you can support, even if you think that, you know, I know a flag flying isn't going to change a whole lot, but what it does is, when I drive by it, it makes me understand that the town I love and the town that I've been here for 30 years and given as much as I can give to this town, that they support the fact that that's what I want to do, just like I respect everyone who comes up to this podium and speaks out against it. You know, I understand that. I was a little naive. I didn't realize our town was as divided as it was, but I have to respect that. Hate doesn't scare me anymore. It did in the very beginning, because I didn't know how to deal with it, but it doesn't scare me anymore, because I know who my son is, and I know what he's all about, and I know that he loved being a part of this community, just like I do. I've probably lost more elections in this town than anybody. I'm like the Susan Lucci of Bridgewater, you know, and I've been on the losing end of a lot of votes in this town in those 30 years, but never once did it waver that I wasn't going to support this town, and I wasn't going to do whatever I could do to make this town the best town that it is. So the only thing, and people from the other side said the exact same thing. It comes down to us being a welcoming new town, to each and every one of us as citizens, to welcome people. It comes to us to be a town that's against hate, to each one of us citizens, that when we see hate, we call it out. It's not easy. It's scary, but that we call it out and make change, but we do it respectfully to anybody that wants to voice their opinion. I'm happy to talk to anybody about my journey in the transgender community. I've opened it up many, many times. No one's taken advantage of it, but I would. And they don't have to agree with me, and I'm not going to try to change their feelings. But ultimately, it comes down that we are at a crossroads in this town, financially, the schools, the roads. I know it all. I've been following for a long time. I have invested a lot of time in this room. I've invested a lot of time on Facebook. We are at a crossroads. It's going to take us all. I thank you all for your service. I thank everyone who pulled papers in April, whether I believe in your side or not. The fact that you pulled papers is a plus for our town. But it's going to take us all to deal with all of this. We cannot be as divided as some areas in this nation are, because if we are, we will not be able to face the challenges that we face. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Anybody else? Please, come on up.
Hi, Rachel Daly, 305 Harvest Lane. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for your service here, and I have been inspired, and I just want to announce that I am officially running for, sorry, town counselor at large. And I just wanted to put a name to the face and just say thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Anybody else? Very good. Oh, one more in the back. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Justin Dupree, from 32 Wall Street, 80 Orange Street, 543 Cross Street, and 3216 Axess Drive. I was born into Bridgewater in 1978. My father was born into Bridgewater in 1953. My grandmother was born into Bridgewater in 1932, and her father came from Italy to Bridgewater in the 1800s. I've never known Bridgewater to be an uninclusive town. I've never known it to be as divided as it seems now. You know, I have four kids. I feel strongly about some of these situations, especially about the resolution tonight, but I'm not here to push that. I'm just saying, I don't think we need this to have a tight community, and I feel like that it should just be dropped. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on once, go on twice. All right. Thank you for all those that came up to speak. We appreciate all your comments.
All right. We do not have any appointments this evening. Does anybody actually want to take presentations out of order?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to take presentations out of order.
I'll second it. Okay, all right. All those in favor taking presentations out of order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to presentations. The first one up will be town manager finalist announcements from Bernie from Community Paradigm. So I'll have Bernie come on up and give him the floor. Let's see if it works.
Can I have order in the room, please, so we can continue with the meeting, please? Shh.
Okay.
Hey, can I please have order in the room, please, or we will clear the whole room?
I have quiet, please, so we can continue with the meeting. Thank you. Bernie, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight and allowing me to go on and make this presentation to the town council regarding the town manager search that's been underway for some time now. I will try to make this brief. Just in terms of a summary of, for members of the council, members of the audience, as members of the public watching from home, Community Paradigm was engaged by the town back at the end of October to assist with the town manager search. Again, by way of just sort of some information about Community Paradigm, we've been doing a town manager searches across the Commonwealth now for almost 10 years, and we have, we've done about 120 now throughout the Commonwealth. So we have a long track record here in the state of helping communities fill these very important, but difficult to fill, positions. The first step, whenever we walk into a community, is to identify what the priorities and the attributes are that you're looking for as a community from your town manager. We do that in a number of different ways. We think it's important to go through the process just to, because it's usually been a number of years since a community has hired a town manager, and we, you know, the times and the needs of a community change over that period of time, so we think it's a good step to go back and say, okay, what are the issues now? What are the needs now? Where do we want to go in the future that we need a town manager in place for? So we did that through a number of different mechanisms. We did our research. We looked at all the materials that are out there, and the town of Bridgewater has a considerable amount of materials about where the town has been and where it's going. and where it's going. We did stakeholder interviews, interviewing each member of the council for a good period of time. And also talked to a number of department heads, gathered information from those people that deal on the front lines of service delivery. We spoke to members of the Bridgewater State University. We spoke to the school district. Again, all to get some perspective on what they saw. And importantly, we think community engagement is important. We utilized a tool that we now use because we found it to be more effective than any other means, and that is we conducted a community survey. And Bridgewater, as you can see by everyone here tonight, is a very engaged community. And we got a very high level of response from that. And it was a high level of response from a wide cross-section of the community as opposed to simply one meeting in which we had a small number of people attend. So we felt very good about that. We had almost 190, I think it was 185 people that participated in that. And we used that to help us understand what Bridgewater was all about. But moving beyond that, we also had a community forum on the 27th of January. The search was underway at that point in time, but we felt it was still important to understand what Bridgewater was looking for so that we could help, or that would help inform us and the screening panel, the ad hoc group from the council, in what we should be looking for from the candidates that were brought forward. In terms of actual recruitment, and I think I've spoke to the council members about this, and I know that a couple of other members of the Community Paradigm team spoke about this when they met with you back in October, prior to you bringing us on. It's been a very competitive, it's a very competitive market for hiring a town manager now. There's been such a dramatic turnover, about three-quarters of the Commonwealth, the communities of the Commonwealth have changed town managers over the last five years. So it's very much a seller's market in terms of managers being able to pick and choose which communities they're going to go to. And many communities right around us here have recently, in the last few years, just hired a town manager or a town administrator. And so that makes it even more challenging to find people that are going to apply for these positions. So we went out and we did our search. We did our recruitment efforts. We began it at the end of, we actually began it informally in the middle of December, but when we were starting to get a sense of what Bridgewater was looking for. But we began it in earnest and a more formal sense right after Christmas, on the 26th of December. We posted the position, the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We posted it with the International City and County Managers Association. We distributed it to all of the graduate schools of public administration, hoping to grab some of the alumni from some of those regional institutions. We posted it in other locations of where professional managers are looking. And then we circulated it. We have an extensive database. It's made up of all the town managers, town administrators in the Commonwealth. It also includes people that have contacted us or that we have heard about that are potentially good candidates for the type of position that Bridgewater has here in its town manager position. That database is approximately 400 people that we distributed this out to, hoping to bring people in and bring people back. And then we did extensive candidate-specific outreach, which basically means there were people out there that we knew might be the good fit, that had the right skill set, the right experience, that would be a positive addition to the town of Bridgewater. And we did that outreach. The deadline for all of our applications was January 29th. That was just immediately following the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Conference, where we were able to, again, sort of go out and a couple, I know a couple of the members of the council there, that we were pretty much working the room. It was a very large room at the convention center. But we were trying to get people that were interested, or might be interested in this position, all in time for the January 29th deadline. We had 27 initial candidates, initial applicants, and then we had one withdrawal. Unfortunately, it was a very strong candidate that we'd spent quite a bit of time sort of working with. That particular candidate determined it was in her best interest and her professional career to stay with the community she was with because of some recent successes that she felt she needed to complete within that community. So we started basically with 26 initial candidates. The ad hoc group, the ad hoc committee, which I refer to as the screening committee because it was a screening process, sat down and reviewed that remaining pool, those 26 candidates, and selected seven candidates for interviews, primarily based upon the work experience, what had these candidates done in their prior positions or existing positions, what was their employment history like? What we heard over and over and over again from all of you, from members of your staff, from members of the public that participated in the survey and at the public meeting. People didn't want the next town manager to use this as a stepping stone to something else. They wanted someone that was good to come in here and really dedicate themselves to this position. And so we wanted to look at their employment history and see, how long have they been? How long did they, did they have a track record of jumping a lot? And so we wanted to understand that. And also we wanted to understand if they weren't, were no longer in a position, why they were no longer in a position. Again, I don't think Bridgewater needs to hire someone else's problem. So we spent some time talking to the committee about that. How well did they match to the position statement? Were they coming from communities? Had they had experiences that matched up with what Bridgewater was looking for? And the committee also had to look at the consideration for adherence to the charter requirements. Bridgewater, when it adopted its Home Rule Charter some years back, put an emphasis on hiring a professional manager as opposed to a, you know, we heard this through the public forum process certainly, that Bridgewater should be looking for, it should not be a city. It's a town. It may have a council form of government, but it's still very much a town. So we wanted to stay away from candidates that would be more of a political appointment as opposed to the, what the charter calls for, which is a professional appointment. And I'm just, put the charter requirements up here and I'll just highlight the underlined emboldened section. The town manager shall be a person of proven administrative ability, especially qualified by education and training with prior experience as a city or town manager or an assistant city or town manager, or the equivalent of public or private sector level experience. But clearly, your charter calls for, and it's interesting, we are working with a number of other communities right now in similar positions, and they have similar language. And this is really what the governing body and the public has wanted, is they want to make sure that this isn't a political appointment, it's a professional appointment. And your charter speaks directly to that, as many charters do. So those seven candidates were brought in over the course of a very, very long day of interviews, where they were brought in and a number of topics were considered. One, let's talk about their career. Where would Bridgewater fit into their career? What's, why are they interested in being in Bridgewater? Let's understand that. We gave them an opportunity to speak to that. We heard extensively from the members of the public, as well as from the council and members of the staff, they wanted the right type of leadership and management style, collaborative, consensus building, getting things done, holding people accountable, and motivating people to solve problems. Communication and collaboration. Again, heard this extensively at the public meeting that we held, as well as in the survey. The public wants to know what's going on. They wanted that transparency, so communication becomes important. And also people wanted collaboration. How do we solve problems? The external relationships. You are in a unique position here. I say unique position because there aren't not many communities that have the same institutional relationships that Bridgewater does with the university, with the correctional facility, with the hospital, the business community for the region, as well as your regional school district. So those external relationships and how these individuals interact and what experience they have in interacting becomes important. I've kind of already spoken about the citizen relations and government transparency of having some, but I think what we heard too, that sort of relates more to that than communication and collaboration, is the importance of having someone that would really become a member of the Bridgewater community, that would be visible, that would be present, that would get out and meet with people and talk to people. And we made that a priority in our interviews as well. Financial management, obviously it's a tough, you know, just sitting here tonight and hearing about the issues that you have with your budget. Not unlike almost every other community that we're working with and that I see on a regular basis, there isn't enough resources. How do we squeeze those? How do we make those happen? And how do you maintain the fiscal stability that you achieved here in Bridgewater? Capital financing and project management, particularly as it relates to water and wastewater, but also other projects that you have coming in the pipeline to, that really are invested in your road system. You know, how do you invest to make sure your infrastructure is maintained? Lead use and community character. Again, we hear this in so many communities of all sizes and all types. But how do we make sure that this development that occurs that also is consistent with the community character? So that it blends properly? And there's tension in that in every community. So it's having people that understand that. Personnel management and collective bargaining, largest single-budget item of every community is personnel. And how do you manage to motivate and hold those people accountable? How do you get talent and hold on to talent in this tough market? And then lastly, what's the relationship with the town council? How well do they work with their councils, their boards, whoever they might be working for, to make sure that the policy setting of the council is followed through and is implemented effectively? And how do we make sure that there's adequate communication between the council members and the manager and the administration? Out of all of that, after spending all of that time with each one of these candidates, the committee then sat down and discussed the selection of finalists. What's the level of municipal knowledge? How experienced are they in understanding municipal government? Were they able to present their relevant experiences that matched Bridgewater's needs and priorities? Their interest and enthusiasm for the town? Were they committed to what Bridgewater wants to be and can be? How well do they match to the position statement? When we held them up against that ideal candidate? And how well do they match up to the charter requirements? To make sure that that charter is maintained and that professionalism is still put in place? Out of that, four candidates were chosen. Regrettably, two candidates have withdrawn. I'd like to say I was shocked, but I'm not. This is something that, you know, as you might imagine, with all the searches we've done and what we do across, and what we see across the Commonwealth and what we see across the country as we try to hold, try to watch and see what's going on elsewhere. It isn't just the searches we do. It isn't just this state, it's across the entire country, that searches lose people as it goes through. Part of it is the process. It's a public process. So, which is wonderful. That makes for great transparency. But unfortunately, when people have to put their name out there to the public and they have a job, that can be challenging. And if they go to their board and they say, I've got an interview with the town of Bridgewater, that board is likely going to say, we want you to stay. Other candidates decide not to move forward because they watch, they think, they do more research once it becomes reality, and they decide, this isn't going to be a good match. I'm not ready for these issues, or I don't want to deal with those issues. So there's a lot that goes into this. And at the end of it all, we had those two withdrawals. But we have two very strong candidates. And again, Bridgewater is not unique. Many of the communities around you, as we've watched, the searches we've done, or searches that communities have done utilizing other firms or on their own, have run into the same problem. And they've moved forward and they've made some great picks. So the two candidates you have. The first is Justin Casanova-Davis. Justin has a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University. And he also holds a graduate certificate in local government leadership and management from Suffolk University, which is a joint program of Suffolk and the Massachusetts Municipal Association. So his graduate degree in public administration is very much focused on local government. He also has a BA in political science from Boston College. His experience is, he's currently the town administrator in the town of Norfolk, which a position that he's held for about two and a half years. Prior to that, he had a, held several positions in the town of Brookline. He started as the assistant town administrator in 2018. He was promoted up to be the finance director, treasurer, collector in 2021, while also maintaining his title as assistant town administrator. Brookline, as you probably know, is a substantially larger community than Brookline, a very complex organization. Again, those institutional issues because of the various organizations that exist within Brookline. But he held that, it was the finance director, treasurer, collector there. And then he was also a budget analyst for the city of Cambridge. So he has that larger organization, smaller organization experience with what he's been able to do in Norfolk. Your second candidate is Keith Hickey. Keith has a master's degree in business administration from Southern New Hampshire State, Southern New Hampshire University, and a BS in accounting and business management from Franklin Pierce College. Number of years in municipal government. Currently, he's the town administrator in the town of Kingston, a position he's held now for almost four years, or a little over three years, I guess. No, four years, exactly. Because it's, sorry, I'm trying to keep track of years here. He started there in 2021. Prior to that, he'd served in the town of Winchandon in the center of the state. Winchandon is a community that was having a number of financial and fiscal problems. And he came in in December of 15, stayed there for, until February of 21, when he went to Kingston and worked through many of those financial issues. Salem, New Hampshire before that. Salem is a large community of about 30,000 people, right on the Massachusetts border with New Hampshire. Very suburban community, but also a very strong commercial base along Route 28 and along 93. He was very involved with a large development that worked up there and working that through the process and working with some of the larger businesses up in the Salem area. And prior to that, he was with Merrimack, New Hampshire, again, for about five years. So again, comes with considerable experience in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and serving in good-sized communities that have had their struggles, but he's been able to work through those with success. So we think Keith is an excellent candidate to bring forward to you. The next steps. The background reviews are complete. I have given that material to you. We've done query checks on these candidates. They're all clear. We've done employment verifications. They have actually worked where they said they've worked. And importantly, we did run across this in one other community that we were doing some work in, where there was a gap in someone's resume, not so much in years, but in service, where they worked. And we discovered in our background work that they had actually worked somewhere and never told anybody about it, but there was a problem when they worked there. We verified all these people and where they've been. It matches up completely. Nothing's added on that shouldn't be, and nothing's left off that should be there. So that background work is done. What is also part of the work we do is, we talk to their references. We talk to people we know even before they get to the town to understand how good they are or any issues they have. Again, we're not here to help the town of Bridgewater take on somebody else's problem. But we do want to make sure that we understand the experience of these people, the style of these people, the projects that they've worked on, the experiences that they've had. So we spend a lot of time talking to their references and we completed those background reviews. You have a summary of all those comments that we've received about what they've done and what they're able to do. So that is in the report that we've issued to you. The council has asked for a meet and greet event. I think we talked at a prior meeting of the potential of doing something like that, engaging the public. That's been scheduled for March 9th at the Senior Center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. They will go to, I imagine, opposite ends of the room or perhaps separate rooms. I'm not sure how we're going to do that just yet. But people will be able to come in and meet them, say hello, talk to them, see if they like them. They're both very likable people and very talented people. So we're confident about that. Interview with the council on March 11th and council selection on March 18th. And then an employment agreement negotiations would commence after that. I believe the process, and I, Mr. President, I'll leave it up to you to tell me whether I'm right or wrong on that, is I believe the council is going to provide questions and I will... and I will read those questions?
Yep. We've submitted topics to each council to come up with a question, and we'll get those written up and get them to you. And then when we have the interview process, you can lead the way and lead the questions and hopefully spend about an hour with each candidate at that meeting.
Perfect. And we do, that's very similar to what we do in every, almost every other community we work in now, and it keeps it moving along well. And we try to dig in and get some real information from them about what you as councillors are interested in and what you want to hear in addressing this. And you all have my email. I think you all have my phone number. Between now and when you make your decision, feel free to call me about anything related to this. If you have questions about the candidates, you have questions about the process, obviously between now and the 11th, you'll be focused on what we want to find out. After the 11th, or anything you might have seen in the reference report. After that, it's going to be, you know, helping you whatever way we can to help you make the decision. I know you'll be making the best decision on behalf of the residents in the town of Bridgewater, but again, we're here to help you through that process.
Thank you very much, Bernie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're not really having questions right now, but I will announce if this might be returning to the question after we have the meet and greet. If, we'll maybe try and find ways that citizens can leave comments, or if you want to email any particular councils, the council clerk, we can get your feedback on the candidates in that way.
Just in case I can't make it, I think we should have at least four candidates instead of just two for our town.
Thank you. Next up on presentations, we have Chief Schlatz to go over what's going on at the Fire Department. Chief Schlatz.
Do we get the packets for the Fire Department? No, no. Fire Department packets. Fire Department packets, packets, packets. I don't have them for the presentation. Do they all have those? Yeah. Okay, that's right.
Ready when you're ready, chief.
Thank you for having me tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is John Schlatz, the Fire Chief of Bridgewater Fire Department. I've been chief since November of 2023. I've been on Bridgewater Fire for 28 years now. With me tonight, I have Deputy Chief Glenn Grafton and Executive Chief Renee Rushton. So tonight, we put together this PowerPoint, and we're going to explain to everybody how we operate and some of the things that we do. So I know there's presentations after me, so we'll do questions at the end, if you don't mind. So tonight, we're going to talk about the structure of the department, how we operate, some of our special operations, grants, our community engagement, and challenges and needs. So our department structure. So our department consists of myself, the deputy chief. We have three day officers. We have a fire prevention captain, EMS lieutenant, and a training lieutenant. We have four groups, four captains, four lieutenants, and 40 firefighters. We have two administrators. We have confidential executive assistant, Renee Rushton, and we have an office administrator. Renee? Oh, sorry. And so we'll start with our day staff. We have a fire prevention officer. So our fire prevention officer was created in 2022, and prior to this, our deputy chief was responsible for all the town inspections and along with the daily operations of the By conducting all the inspections, he had, he was trouble overseeing our daily operations, so we created this position. So by doing so, our deputy solely is looking over the daily operations of the department. So also by providing this position, it's a more organized, more efficient fire prevention for the citizens of this town. So if you look at the slide, this is some of the inspections and some of the permitting that our fire prevention officer does. And in this past year, in 2024, he conducted 924 inspections. Also, our day staff is an EMS officer. EMS is the busiest branch of our department, and we'll get into that later on. A lot has to be done to make it run efficiently, and all our staff are paramedics on our department. So this, so his responsibilities are a variety of things, and just to name a few, he provides all the EMS training for the entire department. He makes sure everyone's state and national paramedic licenses are up to date. He educates the department for any ALS changes, any protocol changes, oversees all the inventory, medications, and equipment for all our ambulances, and he maintains the upkeep for our ambulances for our state inspections. Also, he's our liaison for our Region 5 director, for our hospitals, and for our med flake. Next day officer is a training officer. So in our department, our department, everyone does both roles, firefighters and paramedics. So they rotate on all the trucks. So all our guys need to know how to run the tower truck, the ambulance, forest fire, boat, quad, and they have to know how to use every tool and how to maintain every tool. On top of that, firefighting techniques and tools are constantly changing in the fire service, and the technologies and procedures are always changing. So because of this, our guys, our department trains every day. So this is part of our daily operations. So our training officer, some of his responsibilities, he'll set up a monthly training plan for all the, all the officers and all the groups. He documents all the record and keeps records of all the training on and off duty, and he performs evaluations on all the firefighters. And just to name a few things these guys do for training, if you look at the slide, we do, in Fall River, there's a, twice a year, we do a live burn with mutual aid partners. On the lower left, that's the building in Fall River, guys throwing ladders. In the middle right, that's roof operations in the same building in Fall River. Top left, that is Duckspur Estates off of Kerr Street. Our guys went in there, did some firefighter survival training, some rapid intervention training, and some rescue evolutions. Bottom right is, we get cars dropped off, donated from Chuckrin's Auto, and vehicle extracations, cut up the cars. And top right, we do, that's a blue prop door for forcible entry. We've hosted two symposiums this year. So our department had speakers from around the country, and they would talk about some extreme tragedies they had with some fatal fires, and our guys learned from their experiences. Active shooter. We've done this training with the police department. Now, when you think of active shooter, you obviously think police, but EMS has a large role in that also. And also, finally, in our structure, so we run with four groups. We have 12 members on a group. We drop down to, our minimums, we drop down to five. We have a captain, a lieutenant. I'm sorry, we dropped down to 10. We have 12 guys on a group, we dropped down to 10. We have a captain, a lieutenant, and 10 firefighters. Our guys work two 24-hour shifts on an eight-day rotation, and we currently have two firefighter paramedic positions unfilled at this time. So we'll start with our apparatus. So I'll just give a brief description of our apparatus. So we have three engines. Our engines are used for fire suppression. They have the water hoses, vehicle extrication tools, EMS equipment, thermal imaging camera, hand tools. We have one tower truck, that's our ladder operations. We have multiple-sized ladders, ventilation fans, extrication tools, ventilation saws, hand tools. We have five ambulances. We have two at each station. The fifth ambulance we use for details, for like sporting events or any events in town that need EMS. We have one rescue boat at headquarters. We have one all-terrain vehicle, a quad, that's at Station 2. We have two utility task vehicles, one at each station. Two service vehicles, one at each station, we use that for towing the boat or the ATV, UTV, transporting tools and other supplies to a scene. We have five command vehicles, one for myself, the deputy, and each of our day officers. Types of calls, everybody obviously knows fire and EMS, but there's a variety of calls maybe some people don't know about. We have wellness checks. Example would be if someone's away on, away from town, and they're trying to get ahold of a loved one that lives in town, and they can't, they haven't got ahold of them in the past couple of days. They'll call us up, they'll have us go to the house and check on them. Or if they have a loved one that's sick, they can't get to the hospital, or they, you know, they can't, they can't contact anybody, they'll call us up, we'll go to the house, we'll check them out and see if they need to be transported. Wires down, arcing wires, that's obviously during any kind of storm, rain, snow, windstorms. Usually, we'll get branches on power lines or power lines down. We'll work with the police on this. Or we'll get limbs that will fall on services and tip services from the house. We'll get electrical inspector to make sure your house is safe, or call National Grid, or we'll cut and clear with the, if branches are blocking the, blocking the load, blocking, blocking the road, excuse me. Investigations, so you might hear a sign on for an inside or outside investigation. That could be anything from the smell of smoke or the smell of gas, either inside your house or outside your house. Smell electrical burning. We'll come to the house, we'll check your heating unit. Again, we'll get resources for the electrical inspector or the plumbing inspector. We'll have a thermal imaging camera, look at your outlets to see if there's excessive heat in the walls. Or same thing could be, you know, the smell of gas outside, we can notify the gas company. Lockouts, that's obvious, motor vehicle home. Water and flooding, so, you know, we have a cold snap, we could have broken pipes, a couple of days, some cold weather. Whether it's commercial or residential, sometimes people don't know how to shut off their pipes. Our goal here is just to limit damage to the house. Lift assist. Someone falls, you get an elderly person that falls, they're just not strong enough to get themselves up. We'll go to the house, we'll assist them up. They may not be injured, may not have to go to the hospital, but we'll just still help them up. If some people come back from the doctors or from surgery, they need help getting to the house, we'll also assist with that. And our goal here is just to assist the party and provide emotional and physical support. This is our call volume from 2021 to 2024. If you look at the columns, EMS is obviously our ambulance, our transports. Fire could be anything from a structure fire, a chimney fire, a car fire, an outside fire. Anything, any fires we had is in that column. False alarm is exactly what you expect. We get a call for a fire alarm somewhere. It could be caused from smoke from cooking or dust from construction. Other is everything I just said in the previous slide, anything from a lift assist to removing an animal from the house. And if you look at the totals, you can see the continuous increase every year. This past year was our biggest increase with 200 runs. So since 2021 to 2024, there's been an increase of 449 calls. And another concern is, if you look at the EMS column, from 2021 to 2024, is an increase of 620 calls. And if you look underneath there for the third ambulance, 207 times. Basically, what that is, so each station, we have a staffed ambulance. So both ambulance are out on a 911 call. When a third 911 call comes in for a medical, we'll send out our third ambulance, comes out of Station 2, and it's cross-manned with our engine. So the personnel in our engine will jump on that ambulance and go in our third medical. That happened 207 times in 2024. Third and fourth medical details, medic detail to the ambulance, 201 times. Basically, what that is, so sometimes we'll send our engine with our ambulance. So if we go to a medical and it's a serious call, someone has a cardiac event, or they're not doing well medically, and we need an extra set of hands for patient care, we'll take, now, remember, everybody's paramedics on our department, we'll take a medic off of our engine, and we'll have them jump on the ambulance and assist with patient care during that transport. And that happened 201 times in 2024. Our ambulance revenue. So we have a private billing company that does our billing and our collections, and our ambulance does collect revenue. So in 2016, our revenue was $1.5 million. And you see the continuous increase, and then we had the drop-off in 2020, 2021, that was the year COVID, no one was going to the hospitals. And if you see the increase from 2021 to 2024, a continuous increase. So in 2016, our revenue was $1.5 million, and 2024, our revenue was $2.5 million. So these ambulance receipts in this account, 60% to 70% of our ambulance receipts are used to fund the Fire Department budget. So 67% of these ambulance receipts in this account is used to fund our budget. And the remaining 30% to 40% remain in this account for the, for lease payments of new ambulances purchased. And our overall budget, if you take our overall Fire Department budget, 30% of our overall budget is funded by our ambulance receipts. And there's also a misconception in this town that the town receives 100% of the ambulance bill, and that's not the case. So Medicare, Medicare plans, 21% of billed charges. They pay 21% of the billed charges, and the rest is contractual adjustment. Medicaid plans, average, paying an average of 20% of billed charges, and the remainder is contractual adjustments. Our prison system pays 39%, and commercial insurance like Harvard and Blue Cross Blue Shield, there are also various types of pay averages, but the average is 70% or more on collections. Our current operation plan, so this is how we run now. So we have two stations. Our headquarters at 22 School Street covers the west and central districts, covers two-thirds of our town, with staff with six firefighter paramedics. Our engine has three, two on our ambulance and one dispatcher, and also equipped at headquarters is our rescue boat and our forestry truck. At Station 2, 77, 774 Plumb Street, that's our east district, that covers one-third of the town, staffed with four firefighter paramedics, two on the engine, two on the ambulance. Our ambulance cross-mans the tower, which means if we get a fire call coming in and everyone's in the station, our ambulance crew will jump on the tower and take the tower to the fire. And like I said earlier, our engine crew cross-mans the third ambulance. So same thing, both ambulance are out from each station on a call, third medical comes in, the engine crew at Station 2 will jump on the ambulance and go to that medical. Our EMS response, so I always hear why we take the engine on the ambulance runs. It's basically for safety for our guys and for the patient. So any cardiac, respiratory, traumatic injury, MVAs, lift assists, or unknown medicals, we'll take the engine. And like I said before, our engine crew, they're also paramedics. So most of these cardiac or respiratory, we try to limit the movement on patients, so it's usually a carry-down. So we bring the extra guys to carry the patient to the stretcher or into the ambulance. everyone's in the station, our ambulance crew will jump on the tower and take the tower to the fire. And like I said earlier, our engine crew cross manns the third ambulance. So same thing, both ambulances are out from each station on a call, third medical comes in, the engine crew at Station Two will jump on the ambulance and go to that medical. Our EMS response, so I always hear why we take the engine on the ambulance runs. It's basically for safety for our guys and for the patient. So any cardiac, respiratory, traumatic injury, MVAs, lift assists, or unknown medicals, we'll take the engine. And like I said before, our engine crew, they're also paramedics. So most of these cardiac or respiratory, we try to limit the movement on patients, so it's usually a carry down. So we bring the extra guys to carry the patient to the stretcher or into the ambulance. And also if it's a serious call, our guys can go in the ambulance, they can start, they can assist, the ambulance crew would start IVs, EKGs, medication administration. And if it's a serious call and they need extra hands, we'll take, like I said earlier, we'll detail a paramedic off that engine, and he'll jump on the ambulance for that transport. And we also have ambulance only response, those are, you know, if we go mutual aid, our ambulance will go only, minor injuries, patient evaluations, and if we go to the prison, we send the ambulance only, unless we're told otherwise that it's a serious call. How we respond, this is just reiterating what I said earlier. We have two staffed ambulances. When both ambulances are out, our third ambulance comes out of Station Two, it's cross manned with that engine crew. And when all our ambulances are out, or at the hospital, we will call guys in to cover the station. So whenever EMS gets, we have 10 guys on a shift, six people are out of town. So we'll call guys in to cover the, cover the station. So this is how we run on a fire, this is a fire response. And this gets difficult to understand, I tried this so many ways, because the issue is when we have ambulances out, our guys are always jumping on different trucks, depending on, you know, where they're at and what's available. So the important number here to pay attention to is the one in parentheses at the end. So when everything's in town, all our ambulances are in town, and we get a fire, we got two engines, a tower, and ambulance responding, we're getting there with nine firefighters. When one ambulance is on a call, we respond to one engine, a tower, and ambulance, seven firefighters are pulling up that scene. When two ambulances are on a call, one engine, one tower, we're pulling in with five. And when all ambulances are out, we have one engine pulling up with three guys on it. So when the first arriving apparatus is on scene, the officer determines it's a work and fire, so he calls a work and fire assignment, and then at that time, we'll call personnel from home, come to the station, man trucks, and we have an automatic mutual aid to the scene. And that's how we currently operate. We'll get into new station operations, but I just want to throw in there, so our new station is on time, it's within budget, it's, they're doing an excellent job, and the estimated time that we'll be moving in there will probably be from December, this coming December to February, sometime in. And this is how we're going to operate with the new station. So our headquarters moves to 1185 Pleasant Street, it's going to cover the west side and half the central district, it'll cover half the town. Same as our old headquarters, it's going to be staffed with six firefighter paramedics, three on the engine, two on the ambulance, one dispatcher. Our new headquarters will be equipped with the tower truck, the rescue boat and the forestry truck. Our, like, so our tower truck's moving from Station Two to the new headquarters. So like Station Two was, our ambulance will cross man the tower truck, and we'll also have the ability to have the third ambulance come out of the new headquarters. And our engine will also cross man the third ambulance for the west side town. Station Two will be east side and half the central district, so it's covering half the town, so went from one-third, now it's going to be covering half the town. Again, staffed with four firefighters, two on the engine, two on the ambulance, and again, cross man the third medical with the ambulance. So now we'll have the ability to cross man a third ambulance at both stations. Special operations, so this is basically, some of our guys, our members are some special operational organizations outside of our fire department. We have three members on the Plymouth County Tech Team. We have one member on Hazmat Response Team, Southeastern Mass District. We have one tactical medic on Simlec with Southeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council SWAT Team. We have six Mass Certified Fire Investigators. We have one youth fire center intervention specialist. We have three certified peer supports for our Regional Critical Incident Stress Team. And we have three certified car seat installation personnel. And we have five members of public fire and life safety educators. So again, just having these members on our department brings us, you know, resources and more knowledge. So now we're going to talk about grants. I included this because this is a big part of our department now. There's, there's a lot of grants offered for the fire service. And as I was stating earlier, I was talking about the training officer. And the fire service, there's always new tools, new technology, and it's, it's hard to keep up. And if you don't keep up, you fall behind. And it's hard to keep up because it's a financial cost to keep up with all the new, new equipment out there. And, and this has become a yearly thing for us, and we are depending on a lot of these grants. So AFG grants, this is a funded, a federal funded grant, assistance to firefighter grants. So wellness grant, this is for firefighter health and wellness, there's been a spike in, in the fire service, heart disease, lung disease, and cancer. So they're trying to get ahead of it with early detection. So we've been applying for this year, we've been using this grant for the past seven years. And the past grant we got from 2022 was just shy of $34,000. And for the past seven years, our guys have been getting full body ultrasounds, CAT scans, physicals with blood work, cardiac stress tests. This April, we're having a gallery of blood tests for early cancer detection. We also, through this grant, had physical fitness equipment for both stations. Also, the AFG grant is this forest fire truck we have, this is in the picture, this is a 2024 forestry truck, with all the bells and whistles, that's at homecoming at Bridgewater State University. Got that truck through a grant, that truck is $240,000. SCBA replacement and SCBA fill station, that's basically our air packs we use when we go into fires. The ones we had were all expired, basically out of service, but we were still using them. Again, huge expense. We replaced 62 bottles and 31 harnesses, that was $277,000. SCBA fill station, replaced the previous one, which is approximately 30 years old, that was $70,000. Regional training we did with Rainham Fire and West Bridgewater Fire at a cadaver lab under a doctor's supervision. These guys got to practice all their paramedic skills, with intubations, chest decompressions, Also firefighting boots and PPE, Blue Door forcible entry training prop, like you saw on the training slide, that's a regional prop that we have with our surrounding towns, $8,000. And all these AFG grants is at the local cost share 10%. Also, community risk reduction, which is basically our senior safe program, it's a two-year grant, that was $107,000. And that grant was at a local cost of, local cost share of 5%. Mass firefighting safety equipment grant, this is a state grant. This grant we received for the past four years. This is funded by the Department of Fire Service. So this grant is, is based on your town population, and because of our population, we're granted to get up to $19,000. And like I said, we've had this for the past four, got this for the past four years. I could do pages of some of the stuff we've gotten in the past four years, but this is just some of our recent stuff. Four gas meter, positive pressure, ventilation fans, rope rescue equipment, thermal imaging cameras, cold water rescue suits, flotation devices, rescue struts, training simulation software, excuse me. Just one quick note, I just want to, just want to express, excuse me, to apply for these grants is very competitive. You're going up against other fires, fire departments, and you have to, to fill out the application, you have to meet a certain criteria, and you have to show the need for the financial funding. And through the past five to seven years, we've gone so much equipment, and I just want to publicly recognize two members on this department that did all the work, that's got all the stuff, is Deputy Grafton and Renee Rushton. Community Risk Reduction, so this is also funded by the Department of Fire Services. This is a two-year, every two-year grant. Basically, student awareness of fire education, this is our safe program. Our safe program is made up of eight firefighters. Their primary goal is to educate children about fire safety and promote safe behaviors in case of emergency. And this has been part of the Bridgewater Fire Department for over 30 years now. They do probably 30 to 40 events a year. They speak with all the kids at the Mitchell School, Williamson intermediate school, Bridgewater Middle School, Bridgewater Rainham High School. And I'm proud to say, back in 2016, this past year in 2024, Division of Fire Services nominated us for Educator of the Year. Community Risk Reduction, this is a senior safe, this is our senior safe program, and this basically, we have a partnership with Elder Affairs in Bridgewater, and basically what we're doing is we are going into your home to make sure everything's safe. It's not an inspection, we're not looking to see if you're within code, we're basically going to see what kind of safe measures you have in your house, and we'll give our input and, and add and make it as safe as possible for you. This program started in March of 2023. Since then, we have visited over 600 homes. And some of the stuff that guys will go in there and look out for is CO and smoke alarm checks, make sure they're not too old, we'll replace them, replace the batteries, kitchen safety, electrical hazards, heating units, bathroom safety, trip and fall hazards, and proper landing, as you can see. Our community engagement. This is our Honor Guard, we have 12 members on our Honor Guard. All these members volunteer their time for any Bridgewater Fire event, funerals and parades. Out of the 12 members, these are the four best looking guys I could find for this picture. Fire truck rides, oh, excuse me, career affairs. We, we're always recruiting. Career affairs at Bridgewater State University and Bridgewater Rainham High School will always put a booth up. Fire truck rides to school. So local organizations in town will have, they'll have fundraisers, we'll let them auction off a ride to school. We'll come to the people's residence, pick up the kids, mom and dad will take pictures, and we'll drive them to school. Station visits, so we'll have Girl Scouts, private school groups, homeschool groups, recreational groups will come to the station for a visit, we'll pull the trucks out, we'll pull the tools out, show them the tools, let them climb on the trucks, show them the gear. Always recruiting, never too young. Operation Santa, again, this is a, this is a great project, this has been going on for a long time now. Basically, we work with the volunteers from Operation Santa. So some of the residents, residents will come and drop off gifts to the fire station, and we will transport the gifts weekly to the sorting center. And we will, also, some businesses in town will do the same, they'll collect, collect gifts, we'll go to that business, we'll pick up the gifts, we'll take pictures with the business, and we'll also transport them to the sorting center. And then a couple of days before Christmas, members of our department will volunteer their trucks, and they will go and deliver all these gifts to the families in need. Santa rides. So one weekend before Christmas, our members will, one will dress up as Santa, we'll take two days and try to drive to every street in town, and we'll divide it up in two days, half on one day, half for the next. Renee will do her best to put the roots on social media, and as we drive by, kids will be out there waiting, and they'll be waving a Santa. And this, again, this has been going on for a long time, and our guys volunteer the time, volunteer their time to keep this tradition going. Community engagement, Strand Theater Fire Remembrance Ceremony. So this is, this takes place in Brockton. This was a fire on March 10th in 1941, 13 firefighters were killed by roof collapse at the Strand Theater, making it the deadliest firefighter disaster in Massachusetts. So the gentleman on that picture to your left, that's one of our own firefighters, Ryan Young, his great-grandfather was one of the 13, John McNeil, that died that day. So our guys go every year in tribute to Brockton Fire and to firefighter Ryan Young. And parades, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and that's a beautiful floor of our Honor Guard there. And that's it for our community engagement. So that's basically how we run, that's how we operate. Now our challenges and needs. So our biggest challenge is our staffing. We have two stations, we have a three-man engine at our headquarters and a two-man engine at our Station Two. So this right here is NFPA 17. So NFPA is a National Fire Protection Association. It's a national organization that develops fire safety codes and standards for all fire departments across the nation. It's a national safety regulations, basically. And what this one here says, this is for staffing standards. This is for a single-family dwelling. Initial fore-lam assignment for a structure fire with a typical 2,000 square foot, two-story single-family dwelling, without a basement, no exposures, must provide a minimum of 16 members, 17 with an aerial device. Aerial device means our tower truck. So they're, they're saying to pull up with a, a single-family structure with 16 members, 17 members. It also requires an engine company to be staffed with a minimum of four on-duty members. So again, my most concerning thing is that a two-man engine at Station Two. So the first 10 minutes of a fire is the most important. So the officers are going to decide if you're doing an interior attack or an exterior attack, if you have to make a rescue, or if you're, and you're calling for resources. After he calls a work and fire assignment, calls for resources, you have 10 minutes before mutual aid gets there. So as NFPA suggests, 400 personnel in the engine. Again, Station Two has two personnel. With two personnel, you're unable to make a fire attack. A standard rule, rule of thumb in firefighting is two in and two out, meaning no one person goes into a burning building by himself. So with two guys pulling up to a fire, you have one guy that has to tend the pump, and that puts one guy in the nozzle. Completely dangerous and unsafe. It's unable to conduct a safe search and rescue. So again, first minute on there, you decide if you're putting out a fire or if you have to go in and make a rescue. So with two guys on an engine, can't be done without a person on the exterior of the building. You need someone on the outside of the building assessing safety hazards or changing conditions, whether it's a flashover or, or roof collapse, you've got two guys going, going in there by themselves, you have no way if you're going to the first floor, second floor, again, it's just a very unsafe habit. On top of that, with the opening of the new station, so now you're getting, our east side engine is right now covering one-third of the town. So when the new station opens, now it's going to cover half the town. So out of those 5,000 calls we did this year, that east side station is going to probably pick up a minimum of another 1,000 calls. With a two-person engine, you can do the calls I was talking about earlier, you can do the investigations, you can do the wellbeing checks, you can do the, the power lines down. But as a first arriving engine, with a two-person engine, is completely ineffective and dangerous for your firefighters and for the public. Our minimum staffing is 10, it needs to go up to 11, making our east side station engine with three personnel. Each station at this time will be covering half the town, and each station will have a three-man engine. And by doing this, we'll make an effective engine at the east side for any fire situation. And by doing this, we'll make an effective engine at the east side for any fire situation. Also, operational challenges, increasing call volume. As you saw the past four years, it is increasing continuously and it's not changing any issues. Nothing's going, nothing's going to change. So future residential building is going on in this town and will have an impact on the fire department. And the department needs to keep up with the growth of the town. Future needs. Staffing of the third ambulance. So we're just shy of thirty-seven hundred calls. If you are, if we are able to staff the third ambulance, that will keep both engines manned at both stations. So we will no longer have to cross main to third ambulance. And also by bringing up staffing to the third ambulance, instead of arriving on scene of a fire with nine or ten, this will bring us up to ten, sorry, to twelve to fourteen. That will get us close to that NFPA seventeen-ten. Civilian dispatches. So right now, we do have one of our firefighters. As we rotate on trucks, we also rotate through dispatch. Obviously, a financial savings to the town with civilian dispatches that would take that firefighter off that desk and put him on the apparatus. And central station. For the obvious reasons, this would, having a central station, we could staff the tower and ambulance at the center station. It'll improve response times throughout the town. And there is future residential growth in the center. It will also impact us by having that center station will definitely help. And if we ever do build a center station, would not have to be a big station, two-bay, double-bay garage station to house the tower and the ambulance. Additional Fire Prevention Officer. So again, as the town grows, it puts more demand on our Fire Prevention Officer. As I said, the last two years, he's done over nine hundred inspections himself. And comparing other towns with our size, with their departments, they usually staff at least two Fire Prevention Officers. And that's it.
Any councilors have any questions for the chief?
Mr. Murphy?
Just a few. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation and thank you to your staff, Deputy and Renee, for putting that together and all the work that you do. Just a quick question, or maybe a question in a homework assignment, if I could. Of the five thousand calls, how many, if you had to put a percentage on it, would be related to the state prison or BSU? If you had a rough guess of that?
For some reason, I knew you were going to ask that question. So in 2024, at Bridgewater State University, not sure which is for fire alarms or medicals, but totaled two hundred and forty-one calls to the college. And to the prison, it was a hundred and ninety-seven.
And then just as a follow-up, Chief, and no immediate rush on this, but you had a really nice slide that showed the call volume and it was broken down by EMS and et cetera. Would it be possible to get something similar that's just related to BSU and the state prison to understand really what that breakdown looks like? As we enter budget challenges, I know that we're going to search for ways that we can push the state on that funding. And if we can demonstrate a trend or growth, which I would assume, just generally looking at, there is probably one, I think it would be helpful to have in our back pocket.
Yeah, no, I can, I can have that done.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Mr. Lindy?
Chief, I want to thank you and the department for all the stuff that you do, the heroic stuff, good, excellent, good presentation. I, having come from Brockton, I saw the slide with Strand Theater. Okay, I used to cover that ceremony every year. I noticed at one point, there was a nice ceremony. You guys do some nice things, which are very quiet and behind the scenes, okay? I happened to be going to breakfast one Sunday morning and I saw a ceremony taking place on the common. So obviously, I didn't know what it was, so I decided to just join the ceremony in progress. I'm proud of you guys. I'd like us as councilors to know about that stuff so we can just show up and be supportive of the department. If that's okay.
Not a problem, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming. I like that you do on your Facebook, your monthly call summary and it's gone. Is that related to drug use? Are we having a problem with that?
No. I don't see any spikes of drug use or anything. It's been pretty steady.
That's good.
But it's, you know, you guys saw the, saw the slide. It's gone up every year and we're two months into this year and these two months that we've just, January and February, have higher call volumes from last January and February. So it's continuous.
Okay. And I want to compliment you on your staff. They're great because I went through that cert training and I would recommend people do that. They do a really good job.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Mr. Chase, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Chief, I want to thank you again for your presentation and all the work you've put into it and all the work that you do frankly every day. Just one question. I didn't notice in the slide covering your future needs, your anticipated needs, but I'm just curious about, in the long run, or maybe the short run, what about the needs for additional apparatus in terms of another engine or ladder truck?
We do, I've been working with finance and that's part of our capital plan. We have an additional fire engine and ambulance come in the summer and an additional fire engine and ambulance coming a year from that.
Okay. That are already, that's already provided for. And as to the ladder truck?
That is on the radar. So right now, to get an apparatus, if I order it today, it takes three years to get it for a tower truck. And I've talked to Rep. Dennis Gallagher. So in our past ladder trucks or tower trucks, we had aid from the state. So that's, that conversation's happening right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Go ahead, Mr. Larrity.
Thank you, Chief. I was really excited when I saw the AFG for wellness. I'm in the industry and the Galeri test is fantastic and all the things there is really great. So if you ever need any assistance or if I could help in any way on that front with you guys, I would love to volunteer my time for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larrity. Anyone else? So again, thank you very much for the presentation, Chief, and thank you to Deputy Chief for all your hard work. So just kind of going back a little bit, my question is, you know, with your four groups of twelve currently, you said you got two firefighter paramedic positions unfilled. So are you kind of running with nine firefighters with some groups or is this?
We still, we hold ten.
You still hold ten?
We bring someone in.
I understand, okay. And then ideally, you know, obviously, when we get the new station open, where would you like to see these groups be manned as far as, I saw what you put down in the, in the, in the wants, but where would you, you know, in the short term, where would you like to see the numbers be and for those groups?
Ideally, what I, you know, the most pressing issue right now is to get to eleven. That will give us an extra guy in each group and that will give us two three-man engines, two three-person engines. And not too far after that, ideally, would be to staff a third ambulance. We staffed our third ambulance, both engines at each station stays in service, there's no cross-manning. Cross-manning is not something we used to do years ago because our call volume's gotten so, especially in EMS, it's increased so much to keep up with, where our guys are jumping from truck to truck.
And do you have, do you have any new firefighters in the pipeline right now as far as in training or?
We have, we're replacing the two that just started. We're taking applications for the two that are out, but that'll just keep us where we're at.
So it's just keeping you level manned, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the, all the, all the information and the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. One more presentation to get through here tonight. I'll call up our DVW director, Azu, and he's going to give us an update on water, sewer and road projects here that a lot of people are asking for. So I'll give him a moment to get set up. And actually, if we want to take a three-minute recess, if any councilors need to take a quick break, I know I do. So three-minute break.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order and I'll let Azu take the floor and give us his presentation on water and sewer and roads update. Azu, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President.
Please in the audience, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council and the great people of Bridgewater. I apologize, I've been battling flu for the last 10 days.
I'm sorry, Azu.
The body aches are gone, but I just can't seem to shake off the cough. So, I have this, I brought the mask so that people don't get nervous, okay? But on the other hand, I wanna milk it because I'm getting sympathy from my wife.
Ah, right, right.
As you may recall, about six months ago, we did have the, our consultants from Environmental Partners make a presentation to the council about our water situation and the sewer. The public works, main building is at 25 South Street, and the public works is composed of the highway, water, sewer, public facilities, which is our buildings. And what I wanna start with real quickly is that Bridgewater Department of Public Works manages the town's public infrastructure, including water supply, treatment, and distribution, wastewater collection, treatment and discharge, and roadways and transportation. And so, as you look at the water and the sewer and the roadways, those are very important in the protection of the safety and the health of the public. So, the next slide I'm gonna show is the, this is the new treatment plan, the water treatment plan that is located at High Street. Okay, so the water system priorities is maximize withdrawals from wells to meet water demand, meet all regulatory requirements, maintain well storage capacity for emergencies, plan for additional sources, ensure financial stability. As you know, the water sewer really enterprise, in other words, they're user-paid. Next is the capital projects that we have. We have two wells that have been, the problem we've had in Bridgewater over the years prior to the new form of government that we have is that the aging infrastructure, we're not really being maintained, and it's kinda all come due at this point. So, we have two wells, well number five, five R and nine R, those are replacement wells for the existing wells that are way, way under capacity. And incidentally, I do have Jonas Cas, Los Cas here with me, he's the water sewer superintendent. He's managed our water resources for the past 20, 25 years and has done an excellent job. So, back and forth, when we presented those by our consultants, there was still investigative study, trying to get a DEP approval for replacement wells. And so, DEP approved that, and now we're in the designs phase, hoping that we can go into construction fairly soon. So, capital projects include well replacements, Flag Street Water Main, but that's kinda off the, off the, uh, active, active road right now because of funding issues, and that we're gonna get to in a little bit. But right now, Flag Street, we're doing the roadwork, and I'm gonna get to it in a subsequent slide. So, we have Cross Street and the pump upgrades, and Main Street, South Street. The next will be the continued, uh, Venom Street, new wells. We do have those wells approved by DEP, and we have a five-year window for activating those, and so you can see all the financial needs to address those. Next would be specifically nine wells, nine R and five R. Once we get those, the idea is to at least be able to sustain the permitted levels. DEP sets the withdrawable limits that we can get. So, right now, our goal is to at least be able to maintain a stable supply and treatment Next would be Plymouth Street Wells, 10A and 10B. Those have the capacity, but because they're not, they're going directly into the distribution system, that is why sometimes you see discoloration. It's not bad water, but I also understand it's very good then to be looking at a discolored water. So, our goal is to get those wells directly to the new treatment plant on the High Street so that they can go through the media filters and be treated. So, we have the budgets for it. So, those are our priorities, replacement wells five and nine, and then bringing 10A and 10B to the treatment plant. And then covers part, that is removal of PFAS, that's gonna be the next phase of work that we're gonna do here. But right now, we are doing valve replacements. About six months ago, we did, we went through a whole replacement of the filters, and we have the proposed budgets for those. And status of all the projects, we have completed the lead inventory, the Great Hill Water Tower, we have repaired the concrete collar for that, for that tower. As you know, those two towers have to maintain safe yield levels so that we can maintain the ability for the fire department to fight fire, and that's very important. And DEP actually recently, even though we are in a very low water demand phase because of the winter, you know, nobody's worrying about gardening, watering their lawns, but the state is still in a drought, drought condition. So, we still encourage people to practice water conservation. So, funding options, we have primarily user fees, retained earnings, and low interest loans that we get from the federal and state governments, and then state and federal grants. There is also class action lawsuits that we have been able to be part of, and that is ongoing. As you know, some of the mandates by the treatments on the wastewater side, that is federal mandates that I call unfunded, unfunded mandates, where they tell you you can't discharge so much limit because we are in Tutten River, and Tutten River is an impaired, impaired water. Okay? So, that leads me into the wastewater. Right now, we have two consent orders from the EPA. The first is to nitrate reduction, nitrate treatment, and the second is phosphorus treatment. So, right now, the upgrades that we are doing and the wastewater treatment plant is for the nitrate. And we have, we have actually started the review process with their consultants to do, to start work. And the Phase Two, we, we went through the evaluation of those consultants, and we're gonna be interviewing two firms next week. So, it was a system priorities, comply with EPA consent order, manage the cost, and then miscellaneous infrastructure upgrades. Then, right here, we have what is called wastewater system project, EPA consent order. As I mentioned a minute ago, the upgrade for Phase One is going on right now, and Phase Two is in the planning stage. Okay, upgrade on Phase One, these are priorities, high requirement of the EPA consent order, upgrade plant that removes nitrogen from effluent, estimated cost is $43 million, revenue source is an Apple loan, principal forgiveness, and user fee, user fees. But we also see our $10 million overall savings to sewer users. Upgrade Phase Two, project priority, Plymouth similar, estimated cost at 56.8 million dollars, and that is required to be completed by June 2031. Okay, funding options, we have user fees, low interest loans, and grants. This is the highway and roads division. Recently, we've completed a few projects, and our acting town manager was the consultant on the OPM for that, helped with the OPM work, and I thank her for being at the right place at the right time and helping us with the funding. She got us a lot of money, grants, to do some of the work. Now, we have completed the bridge replacement project, the dam removal, and we're gonna move into, he has instructed us to take care of the drainage problems that we have that were not covered under the bridge replacement project. So, appreciate being, coming at the right time for us. So, roadways priorities, rehabilitation of existing roads, address underlying drainage and utilities, manage cost impact to taxpayers. Okay, in Bridgewater, these are roadway facts, we have presumably 114.1 miles of road in Bridgewater, and that includes major roads like 104, 28, 18, and then what we call collector roadways, would be like Vernon Street, South Street, Cherry Street, High Street. So, we prioritize our roadways based on the following: function of the road, function of the road, condition of the road, and then, of course, anticipated cost. And this is basically a pie chart that shows you the roadways, where we have drainage issues, and where we have identified the needs for water, main replacement. And then the capital projects that are tied with the roadways. So, you have Vernon Street, Deerfield. Incidentally, last year, we were able, even though we have, we had planned for a major drainage work on Deerfield and in that whole neighborhood, we were able to redesign the profile of the roadway and then adjust some of the drainage structures. So, we have purchased ourselves a good five to 10 years on just the work that we did recently on Deerfield. So, where we can be creative, we have done that. Now, we do now have an engineering division that has taken responsibility for some of the smaller design work. Right now, we only have two people in that office, but they're doing great work. For example, last year, we saved the town over $20,000 in what we used to spend for consultants to take care of the dam safety instructions. And then our highway division did the repair work, like a sort of a dam on South Street. So, now we have a town engineer that actually makes sure that we comply with the State Division, Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Safety Division. So, so you can see a lot of that work is being done, but it needs money. We can get a lot of stuff done if the funds are there. We are exploring a lot of funding sources and going after them, and so we appreciate the guidance that we've gotten from Ms. Robinson on how to pursue some of those funds. Current road was under consideration, High Street, which is in design, South Street, Winter Street, and Flag Street. Flag Street right now came up to review in priority. It's really nothing but the grace of God that all these sinkholes that we were getting, we didn't find anybody disappearing. But I assure you that by the time May rolls around, people will be, will be calling police department to slow people down because it will be a good, it will be a nicely done repair. What happened there is back in the 30s, 40s, they used corrugated metal pipes for drainage, while over time, those pipes are running away. So, we're changing those to concrete, reinforced concrete pipes, as well as ADS pipes, which are approved by the state. So, we're taking care of those issues. Road project status, Friday's on the way, Winter Street, that's another, another project that we did, is done 100% by our engineering division. That saved the town well north of $75,000 in our consulting fees that we would have paid if we did not have an in-house engineering division to do that design work. So, we are moving, moving along. And with that, funding options for some of this roadwork, chapter 90 funds, debt exclusion borrowing, and grants. And with that, I think I've kinda run through the, yeah.
Thank you, Azu. I'll certainly open up to.
Make sure I don't cough on anybody.
Yeah, get a little water in there. I'll open up to councillors for questions. Mr. Lindy.
First of all, thank you for coming here and even being sick and presenting such a comprehensive report. The scary part is the price tag, okay? And obviously, the end of the presentation, I see the debt exclusion borrowing. We have so many projects here and we have so much money, so we gotta, but it's good to know, like, I specifically like finding out, you know, how many miles of road we have and all of that stuff. It certainly helps to know what we have in front of us. So, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I don't have any specific questions.
If I could add something on roads, I just wanted to give you a little bit of, put it in perspective. We, as you know, we're gonna finish up Flag Street, and we're gonna address Winter Street. We have about $1.1 million in chapter 90 funds saved up. If this, if the governor's budget passes with what she's proposed, it'll be about that much again. That will allow us to do those two streets and a little bit we have left over from another source for South Street. That's all we'll be able to cover. So, that's why you see some of these roads being on the future list, is that we just don't have the funds to address them, but we are updating our analysis of the status of each road so a new plan can be developed in terms of what are the status in 2025, what are the funding options, so that the town can then decide how best it wants to try to attack those. Because you're right, the numbers are large.
Thank you. Any councillors? Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Azu, for your, your presentation, and we certainly hope you're feeling better very soon. I did just wanna quickly make a point that we know that, for example, Cross, South Vernon, and Flag Streets have been, you know, particularly hard hit and deserving of the most intensive rehabilitation, not just surfacing, but obviously, infrastructure work.
Yes.
And we know that what's going on presently on Flag Street is a very good sign, just the fact that we've been able to generally throughout the course of this part of the winter, you know, without much interruption, had crews doing the drainage work. Now, so is, is water line work to be done as well on Flag at this point?
We, ideally, that would be what we wanna do, but the funding.
The funding.
The funding, and then as well as also, that can wait, I really, I would love to be able to do it right now, but the scheduling and the funding, and if we were to do that, Flag Street would be in bad condition for the next year and a half, and I don't think people are gonna be able to deal with that, okay? So, so that is, that is really the rationale behind that.
Well, I'm just guessing, without knowing anything about what has to be done, but I'm just guessing that the drainage component being done now.
Yes.
Is the more, involves the, the greater amount of work, it's tearing up more of the road, right?
Exactly.
So, in other words, when we get to the point of water lines, water mains, it'll be somewhat less invasive, I guess maybe that's the word. So, that's good to know, but, but you are anticipating that resurfacing will take place on, on Flag with the completion of the drainage?
That is correct. That'll be, that'll be done by June.
Sure. That's great news. Thank you.
Very good. Any other councillor questions?
Just a quick question. Azu, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the work that you do. If you wouldn't mind, could you go back to that capital project slide that you had with the funding on it? $69 million one?
There you go.
Yes, wondering if we could simplify this a bit, and Mr. Robinson just mentioned the governor's money that comes into this. Is there a way to look at this and understand that $69 million isn't what our outstanding number is if we're getting contributions from the governor's office, whatever it may be? Can we incorporate that to really understand what the actual number is that we need?
I think if it's more, I think I would approach it slightly differently. All right, first, and say that updating the status of all the roads and understanding which road is just a mill and overlay versus which one is full-depth reclamation in 2025 will help us refine whether the $56 million column is accurate, or it's too low, or it's too high. And then, then I think we can start to look at options, but, you know, the chapter 90, if it only is gonna bring us a million dollars a year, you can quickly figure out the math. And that's why I think we have to think about other options. And, you know, back to, using Flag Street as an example, we dearly would have loved to do that work, get in there, do it once, and leave that road for a number of years, but the, the critical requirements for getting those wells up to snuff to provide us the water we need and, and address, you'd be ready to address PFAS soon, meant that we just couldn't dedicate it to here because we don't have it. And we also have to keep an eye on what is reasonable in what we're charging our users for water to say, oh, sure, let's, you know, pick a project and add to, bond for $2 million and just send everybody a bill, isn't something we can, we take lightly. We wanna make sure that we're balancing what we've really gotta have with what we'd like to have. I mean, will we pay Flag Street, and might there be a water main break? Jonas?
Don't know, and we just hope that it won't happen in the future.
So, assuming that's an afterplay thing, but how long will it take to get that information, then, like a comprehensive?
I ask, Zoo, how long before the street scan update is done so we'll know what we need to do?
Yeah, so, we have, we have a company called Street Logix that we've been using for years. So, every five years, they do an inventory of our roadways, and then they provide us a report, red being the critical ones, that you gotta do something. Flag Street was an example of a red one, you know? And then they have orange, you need to do something in three years, and then green, you're really okay. Yeah, it's one of those, if you have an extra money, yeah, maybe you'll trim some bushes and put a new fog line. So, that's what we use, and then the highway superintendent and I, and the town engineer, we go around and say, okay, this road, what does it serve, right? How many, if, if, take for example Pleasant Street, if I, you have, that's actually been done twice, redoing Pleasant Street, but you take that as an example, you have the school, traffic come through Pleasant Street, both the middle school and the high school and the university, a lot of traffic come through there, right? So, if, and then you have all those homes west of 24. If you don't have a good roadway that the fire department or the police department can get through quickly, or get to those apartment complexes, you have an issue. So, we look at that, that's how we evaluate these roads. What do we need? What one, need water, sewer, drainage? We look at all those, and then we say, well, let's do this one here because it's a collector roadway, or let's do this one here, it's a material roadway, or, I don't live in a subdivision, right? But I will not give a priority to a subdivision that serves eight houses as I would, for example, on a roadway that serves 80 homes. So, those are the, were considerations that go into those prioritization.
So, you said every five years, where are we in this?
The street, the street scan. So, we have the mission of them doing scanning right now. Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Okay.
And then my last question for you, I think there was a number of 5.9 million in the immediate need to upgrade, I hate to use the word water quality, but water discoloration. Is that accurate, that 5.9 million?
It is fairly accurate because it's based on the design and the contractors that have been doing a lot of that work. So, it is very important that we at least able to stabilize our withdrawal, okay? Right now, we're not doing that because of the aging wells. Jonas, correct, you found wrong. Say for example, well number nine, you should be able to, we used to be able to. used to be able to pump out of that 200 million, 200 gallons a minute. Now it's down to about 30 gallons a minute. And that's why we're replacing that well, because all the repairs, all the refurbishing is basically throwing good money at bad. And so we got to the point where we need to replace those. So once we do that, we can at least stabilize our withdrawal from the wells. They're not going to give us increase in withdrawal, okay? It's just to be able to at least maintain the withdrawal private. But we're also looking at all our sources. Jonas has been in contact with the East Bridgewater, for example, town of East Bridgewater, where we can, their water, where we can probably make a connection to tap into their water on those emergency situations. So we are not sitting on our hands, we're really looking out for the best interest of the town, and how we can do that without overburdening the taxpayers. Incidentally, I live in the town, I don't want to see my rate go up. My wife doesn't like, she gets her arthritis every time she goes to write the check. So.
All right, thank, any other councillor questions? Mr. Graff.
Thank you. Do you know how many gallons of water we use each year?
Well, I do know that our withdrawal limit is 1.8.
We average 1.7 million gallons last year per day.
Okay. It's my understanding that we add the population and the daily use of the water to determine how many wells we need. Do we do that every year?
No, we're running, we're running every well we have right now, except for the two bad wells which are unfiltered. I try to use them at least, you know, the less possible. If we get in a real emergency situation, I have to turn them on. That's when we get discolored water. Right now, the two replacement wells Azu speaks of, both of them are only producing about 50 gallons a minute right now. Hopefully, with the new wells coming in, we'll get anywhere between 150 to 250 out of them. So right now, as we stand, we're running everything we possibly can, and we're just barely maintaining. We're on the edge as a water for this town.
So do you guys meet with the planning department to show them what developments are coming, to see if you can handle that?
Well, I have voiced my concern to the planning, and projects are getting approved even with what I tell them. I tell them I can't support the project, they approve the project.
And that's something, let me jump in, that's something that we are talking about, and we want to bring the water regulations back to you to be approved because the town, if it's going to consider, you know, certain amount of development is good for a community, but there's a balance. And we want to make sure that we can meet the water needs that we will have for people. And so trying to sort that out is what I think Jonas is getting to. We might need to consider a ban on new development or development of a certain size or amount because we can't meet the water needs that we have. Getting a well permitted takes years, it's very difficult because you're providing water, you know, for people to use in their daily life. That's why exploring, one of the things you saw on the list in the master plan is exploring other opportunities for water outside of Bridgewater. Is it another community that's producing more water than it needs? Is it the plant that's in Brockton that could be tied in through East Bridgewater? As Azu's mentioning, those are options that we're looking at to make sure that we have the sources that we need for the long term.
So until that's accomplished, shouldn't we put a hold on it where there's telling us that we can't keep up right now?
We have to figure, we have to find that balance, yes.
So bringing water from the outside, I know the state caps on how much you, we can pump. So if we're taking more water from another town, what happens if their cap, they go beyond their state cap and they can't give us the water? Because they're only allowed to pump so much.
So, for example, East Bridgewater has wells, but they're also drawing from Brockton. And Brockton has no limits because they have reservoirs open, just like we have a quads reservoir for the Mass Water Resources Authority, and Long Pond in Lakeville. So Brockton has access to desalinated, desalination water as well as a reservoir. So that's where East Bridgewater gets most of their water. And they don't have those issues.
So that won't consider as a cap on us? I'm sorry, that won't, so that won't count as us a cap? Because we're not pumping it?
No, not exactly.
We're just receiving it.
Exactly. So that is the quickest way to increase our capacity without affecting the withdrawal limit on our wells.
Okay. That's concerning what you're telling me.
That's just in the infant stages, we just, I had to start communicating with the superintendent over there.
Yeah.
But we at least.
A lot of other engineering factors, whether their pressure's higher than ours, the water quality's the same as ours, there's still a lot of hoops to jump through on that.
But initially, at least having an interconnection, so if something difficult happened for us and we couldn't maintain the tanks where we need them for firefighting and just general use, we can call, turn on the tap, if you will, to be able to pump, bring water in for a fixed amount of time till we got our issue resolved, and then close it down again, at least in the near term. Most communities have an interconnection, we don't have one right now.
So how long would the connection take if we had a fire right now?
Well, it's not, it's not, you've got to figure out the engineering of connecting where our system ends and that ends, and doing, and building that project, if you will, as well as getting an agreement from that community.
Because that pressure on their side could be less than ours, and we could be forcing water back, even though we have very little water. We still could be forcing the water back towards them.
This is really concerning. I really think we should put a hold on the development until we can come up with something, especially where summer's coming and, you know, we got a drought and you got the fires in North Carolina. I mean, I would just say, but that's my opinion. But thank you, I appreciate it. Hope you guys come back and keep us updated.
Sure.
Because I would like to know.
Mr. Lindy, any questions?
Thank you for bringing that to the public. Please, please, please be careful with the D-SAL plant in Brockton. It's been controversial, it's not, it hasn't been a good source of water for Brockton. And Brockton has an unlimited supply, but the town of Kingston doesn't like that they have an unlimited supply from Silver Lake. Did you have a slide up there that showed us what wells would cost us, the Vernon Street wells? I just want to look at it again, if I might, please.
It's a large number while he's going back because it's not just doing the pump testing, getting, undergoing, it also needs a treatment plant.
38.4.
Yeah.
38.4 million.
Yeah, well, ultimately.
I mean, that's, that's an estimate before design, so.
Right, right, right. But ultimately, we should be getting our own water. Because what's going to happen is if we get Taunton water, and Taunton decides they want to jack the rates, then what are we going to do? If we, if we interconnect with East Bridgewater and Brockton, and they have a budget shortfall, which they, Brockton certainly does, then they're going to jack the rates. The other town is going to end up paying more. So I'm not an engineer. All I know is the Brockton D-SAL plant has been a boondoggle from day one, and it hasn't produced a lot of water for Brockton. The quality of the water, one of the reasons I originally moved is that.
I would, I understand that, I would just caution you, I've talked to the engineers about it, and it's possible, depending on the growth, you know, pattern of Bridgewater, that even bringing the Vernon Street wells on may still not be enough water in the long term. So while I take your comments seriously, I think it's, I think we all need to understand that we still need to be looking for other sources.
Yep. And I'm with Mary, by the way. If we don't have the water to suit the needs of the town, we cannot bring development, and we've been talking about this for a while, water and sewer.
Actually, Mr. Murphy, you had a question?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just briefly, my understanding was that Taunton would be amenable, at least in a very, you know, general sense, in the preliminary discussions, to making water available. And their water is from Lakeville. And so it was, my understanding was, were we to utilize that particular route to secure new sources of water from outside of Bridgewater, it would eliminate the need to even consider Brockton. Is that something, am I on track there?
So that is, just like the East Bridgewater possibility, that is also a possibility that is still in gestation, if you will. Because Taunton also is in conversation with other communities like Dayton. Dayton is already getting some of their water from Brockton and wants, excuse me, from Taunton, and wants an increased supply. The hospital and the prison get their water from Taunton. And so it is a possibility. But also, to Mr. Councillor Lindy's point, Taunton also has different chemical processes than what we have. So that has also been investigated. And, but there's a lot more higher level of communication and conversation involved in that Taunton one than it really would be through with East Bridgewater. And I will defer to the town manager to opine a little bit more on that if she's fit. But that is a possibility, Councillor Chase.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Murphy, then I'll get to Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, two, two quick questions for you. Is it possible to isolate the state usage of the water to understand what that flow has been, gallons per day, whatever it is?
Well, the state, the state doesn't come from us. They don't get, the uni, I mean, the university?
The university or the prison, which the prison you just said comes from Taunton. Yeah.
The prison doesn't get from us.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't isolate. I wish, I wish, well, we can get from there. Something, there's also even a conversation about what we can get into your wastewater treatment facility as well.
What about, so what about Bridgewater as a, I mean, the state? Is it state university?
They actually are the biggest of a consumer, if you will.
Yeah, could you, is there possible to demonstrate that and maybe a chart or something to show the usage over the last three years, and if that stayed the same or if it's increased?
Yeah, we can look at their water bills.
And does, very quickly, does the state pay the same rate as we do, as uses it, the exact same?
They pay the highest rate.
They have the same tails.
Yeah.
They're in tier three, aren't they?
Yep, they're in tier three.
So there's three tiers, the more you use, you go up to the highest tier, the highest tier is $9.66 per cubic, thousand cubic feet, I think?
But they're all smart meters, so we get instant read. The next morning, I go into the computer, I can see what they use for the day, right away.
And last question, thoughts on the Perkins development, how that's going to impact our water usage?
Perkins development?
Yes, yeah.
Multi-use thing?
Yeah.
I can't support that at this time. I'm just telling you the truth. Right now, we're struggling to maintain what we got now. In the winter months, we should be topping off these tanks and resting these wells. Wells are running. Tanks are a little over half. That's just the facts.
Thank you.
Ms. Albrecht has a question.
Yes, we talked about how the Vernon Street well would be 38 million, if I heard it correctly.
That is correct.
What would be the cost of the Brockton tie-in? What would be the cost of the Taunton tie-in in terms of whether we should go towards Vernon Street development? What, what is the cost of these two tie-ins if we were to go with outside sources of water?
Okay, so I can, I can very well, based on my experience, my knowledge, it ain't going to be 38 million. It ain't, it ain't going to be $38 million, it'll be less than that.
Less than that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I have to look at the, I have to look at the infrastructure work. Say for example, we're going towards East Bridgewater. I have to actually see how much piping we need, how much roadway work we need. We're going to need a mini pit involved, so I have to actually look at the design elements, so that I'm not giving you a fictitious number.
Do you know the rates of the water charge from Brockton and from Taunton?
No, we haven't even gotten that far. How much they're going to charge us?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. How much are they going to charge us?
Mm-hmm.
They don't know that yet.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Okay, go ahead.
Just a question, could the college through the prison end up getting their water there? Because I, if the college is our number one user.
Yeah.
And we wrote them to another source, then we have water for development.
Yeah, we have discussed that internally, about if that, we can get that water from Taunton and then isolate that section. That'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Trigus.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Councillor Murphy stole my question, but I did want to just be on the record, everyone in town probably knows I'm very pro-development, but I'm pro-responsible development, and I can't sit here and not see that we have clearly had a mismanagement problem with our water for years. And I would be remiss to sit here and say that I can still support additional development with these issues that we are currently facing when our own people that we have tasked to do the job to service this town can't get behind it. You're the experts, we're not. So for me, it's very difficult to sit here and still have a pro-development stance, albeit that I believe it is, in a lot of ways, beneficial for our town, but we have to be financially responsible, and we can't get there with additional development.
Thank you, Ms. Trigus. Oh, Tom Hanner.
I wanted to mention this earlier, I don't know if any of you read the Boston Globe, but earlier this week, they had a very good article, front page, if you will, if online is front page anymore, about how communities across the state are all struggling with meeting their capital needs for water, whether it's replacing the asbestos cement pipes under Flag Street or building a new source. Communities have gotten behind over the years and, you know, and not that there's any comfort in being like everybody else, but you're not, you're not, we're not unique here. And layer on that the expectations at the state and federal level have gone up over the years with what it takes to meet DEP requirements for just the water we produce every day, to PFAS, lead service line replacements and treatment. It just has become, it used to be that the water bill was the little one that you got, and it's not, the article is very clear, that's not the case anymore, it's getting more expensive wherever you are. So I know it doesn't make anybody feel any better, but I just wanted to, if you get a chance to look at it, I would, I would recommend it.
Thank you very much. So just in conclusion for me, guys, again, thank you for the presentation. You spoke earlier about the Plymouth Street wells being the ones that contributing a lot of discolored water to some areas of town, and then we're trying to get that connected to the High Street Treatment Plant. Is there a timeframe to get that done? I know you've got some funding sources listed here, but what is your approximate timeframe to get that in place?
You've already approved the money for the survey and design, that's already underway. And then we'll be able to go out to bid after that, but it's connecting, what, about a mile and a half of water main? And then making some treatment plant changes at High Street to take the iron and manganese out of the water? So we did get on the state's intended use plan for borrowing, that was the number you saw on the slide, to be able to borrow at a low-interest loan, which is great news. There are only about 10 projects on that list statewide. So I credit those who came before me with getting us there. So we'll be able to at least do it at a less expensive rate, but I defer to Azuist at the timing.
Yeah, just, I mean, again, nothing.
Talking to the engineers this week, and I pushed them for a estimated timeframe to get those wells over.
Yeah.
It'll be about a year from now.
Okay. And those wells are serving what part of town mostly? Is that the eastern part of the town?
Well, wells 10A and 10B have been down for months now.
Right. But they would serve which part of town?
It would come right into the High Street plant, where it would be distributed from there.
Okay.
What, what areas are getting?
Right to that area of town. It would come from the High Street area and go out to the public.
Okay.
What areas are getting the brown water? What streets would you say are getting the brown water complaints when you turn them on?
They'll all be around that area, the High, Plymouth Street area, Walnut Street. Whenever we turn those wells on, we get top of Plymouth, Walnut Street, it gets onto Augeran, sometimes down to Flag, Laurel Street. And what we try to do to minimize it is try to flush as soon as we get a complaint.
Yeah.
It's the best we can do.
Sure. No, I just was curious to see, I think that could be obviously very. No, I just was curious to see, I think that could be obviously a very helpful situation with the discoloration problem that we have in town.
It's all over for the workers too, because they're running around like chickens with their heads cut off trying to solve this thing.
Right. Um, second question, um, I know you guys had said having internal, uh, discussions about BSU and probably connections to the prison, is that would be a combination of both water and, uh, outflow sewage? Could we get sewage, uh, down to the prison as well?
That is, that is the thinking.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a great strategy to, to look at. Um, and then finally, um, I know a lot of, you know, people in town are, are asking for road improvements to large sections of South Street and Vernon Street and Cross Street. Can you just speak to the infrastructure that probably needs to be worked on first before, you know, repaving a road can kind of take place? Because I know a lot of people are wondering, why can't we get those roads repaired?
Yes, sir. That's a good, that's a good question. So, um, let me get to the... Okay, so on this slide, for example, you will note that, uh, on the potential, the cost per mile, so we have the distribution of the number of miles of roads. If we're doing mill and pave, basically, we, uh, the road bed is okay, but because you have deterioration of pavement, we're just going with the, uh, milling machine, milling it up and repaving, which is basically what we did on Deerfield. Uh, the cost of that is three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars per mile.
Right.
So you can see, if you have two miles, just multiply that, right? Uh, if you have full-depth reconstruction, which is basically the road bed is weak and you need to redo the gravel base, then that'll be five hundred and seventy, uh, thousand dollars per mile. Uh, if you need a granite crabbing, uh, and that is what we do in some of the roads, like, uh, right here on South Street, that helps with the channelization of runoff. Then it goes up to six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per mile.
Yes, sir.
And then if we add water, you're at a million six a mile. So South Street, Vernon Street, Green Street, Main Street, those are the really, yeah, there's a cross street. Those are going to require all of the elements of the reconstruction. Uh, Vernon Street is a good example of that. So if you look at that, we're, we're doing water, sewer, uh, water drainage. Uh, if you go back, I think I do have, uh, figures for, uh, yeah. So you can look at, uh, the capital projects right here. Vernon Street, you're looking at seventeen million, okay? Deerfield, six million, but we actually have done for less than a million dollars, uh, bought ourselves a good amount of time, because the water, uh, in the Deerfield area, the water mains are good because they have very recently done, they have part of subdivisions, so there's a PVC pipes, Dr. Lion pipes, that are not asbestos cement pipes, that we want to replace in some of those, like on South Street, Flag Street, right? So you can see the actual numbers that we've come up with, uh, based on those costs per mile that I've given you.
Right. So again, it's, it's not the fact that we don't want to repave the roads, if we got to do the infrastructure underneath. I hate seeing a road that's just been recently repaved, redug up shortly thereafter to do infrastructure.
Yes, yes.
So we don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much, Azu, on that. Um, I, I just, any final questions before we let Azu go? No, all right. Thank you, Azu, for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
So now I can go back home?
Yes. Rest. Feel better. Go get some rest. Feel better.
Mr. President?
Yes, no, I, I see our time's getting closer to ten, so in order to extend our meeting past ten, I'm going to ask for a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lindy, seconded by Ms. Riggles. All those in favor to extend past ten so we can finish our meeting, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None taken, so we can continue. Thank you very much for that. We have finished our presentations tonight, and again, thank you for all that made those presentations. Um, next up, town managers' report, nothing specifically listed.
Jim.
Oh, yes.
You have to go back to hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you very much.
That was three hours ago.
Slight slip of my mind, oh, sorry. Uh, yes, we have to go back to item F in hearings. We have proposed ordinance, uh, DFY twenty-five dash zero-one-three, proposed amendment to Part Two, Admin Code, Chapter two ninety, Article One, Section One on Shade Trees. Did you grab the packet? Again, this was, uh, had brought forth before us before, had an initial, uh, reading. This just updates, um, wording within, uh, that particular section of the admin code. Um, again, uh, the main issue there is changing, um, the elected tree ward, uh, tree warden change to appointed. Um, it's been, uh, it's been read, uh, twice, and now we are up for a, like I said, a hearing tonight to, uh, see how we will go forward with this. So, uh, I will first, uh, open a hearing itself. It is nine fifty-six P.M. Is there any general questions from the public regarding this matter? Seeing none. Anyone in the public speaking in favor of this matter? Seeing none. Anybody speaking in opposition to this matter? Seeing none. Any further questions from any town counselors on this item? Ms. McGrath?
I have one. A resident asked me, if we get a tree warden, will they come out and supervise national grid? Because they, there was concerns, like they were cutting all the branches down, but the tree was dead and they left the stub up. So if we had a tree warden, would the tree warden be part of the national grid when it comes to cut out trees, like supervise?
Uh, I might defer to the town manager for comment on that?
I wouldn't say they oversee them, they, they'll consult with them. Utility companies usually are supposed to call when they're going to do work and, and discuss it, but I think they can certainly make our issues known about wanting to not leave a tree, as they tend to, some of them will tend to leave a tree. But, um, you know.
Thank you. That answered it.
I hope that helps. Any other questions? Ms. Lindy?
Through you, Mr. President, to the town attorney. This is administrative code, but is there anything in the charter that, um, specifies an elected tree warden?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. Uh, so then I will go ahead and close the hearing at this time, which is nine fifty-eight, a two-minute hearing, um, and I will entertain a motion to approve. Ms. Riggles, thank you. A second.
Second.
Ms. Loretty, uh, any further discussion on the item? Mr. Lindy?
I'm just going to state for the record, I'm sorry, I know people might be mad at me, but I don't believe we should take away elected positions from the citizens, so I intend to vote against this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, uh, all those in favor of, uh, passing the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we have two. So that'll be one, two, three, four, five, six, in favor, and two against. Motion carries. All right. That is our one and only hearing for this evening. We will move back forward down to, uh, town manager's report. I don't have anything specific listed, is there anything you want to review tonight? Thank you. We will power go the town manager's report. We do not have any further discussions.
Could we ask questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, good point, yes. Um, any further, uh, requests for the town manager? Uh, Ms. Riggles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was informed by a resident that there happens to be no right turn sign located at the North Street exit of the high school. Could we please look into that and potentially have that reinstalled just for overall traffic flow, just to make sure everything is designed as it was supposed to? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Um, is there still one opening on the committee of finance and budget?
Yes, I believe it is the town manager's appointment.
All right. I know a resident, so they should just apply to you.
I, I'm not aware it came in, but I can check with Josh.
I don't think they did. They, they weren't sure, so I told him I'd ask during the report.
Sure.
I'll, I'll suggest that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lindy?
Um, every time I walk downtown and I go by Town Hall, Academy Building, there's a fire hydrant that has a red flag on it. It's been there for two years. I'm hoping we can address it at some point. I asked the previous manager, and it still has a big red, it's not functional.
Okay.
This is an important building, we invested a lot of money in it, and I don't want to see anything happen.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, uh, no further discussions for tonight. Uh, committee reports. Do we have any updated committee reports?
Only a reminder about March ninth, Sunday evening, five to seven P.M. at the Senior Center, uh, to meet the two town manager candidates. Uh, open to everybody, and there'll be town counselors there, present. I know it's been posted as a town meeting, so, um, I encourage folks to give feedback to town counselors either that evening or via email following that, um, so that we can incorporate that feedback, uh, into our decision-making process. Um, but I think everything else has been updated, and the March eleventh meeting will be at seven P.M., uh, for the interviews here, uh, in this room. So March eleventh, uh, open to the public, uh, at seven P.M. here.
Yep, very good. Any other committee reports?
Not a report, but I'm going to schedule a budget and finance, uh, either at six or six fifteen on the eighteenth. We have a few items to refer back to the council, and hopefully the finance committee will also meet, and it worked out well last time. If you want to join us and we do a joint meeting, that can work as well. That way the town people don't have to explain it twice.
There you go. Thank you very much. Anything else? Any other committee reports? All right, seeing none. We will move on to legislation for action. Uh, first one up. Uh, Resolution RFY twenty-five dash zero-zero-six, asking the town manager to explore applying for the emerging contaminants in small disadvantaged communities grant as part of a comprehensive strategy to fund the PFAS remediation. Uh, we kept this at the council level. Fourteen days has elapsed, and we can go ahead and, uh, take care, you know, act on it as a council here this evening. Uh, this was brought forward by Council Loretty. Any brief updates, Mr. Loretty, on the, uh, resolution?
No updates. We just heard extensively about how expensive our water situation is, and any sort of grant money would be helpful, and this is, uh, just a resolution to explore applying for this grant as part of an overall comprehensive strategy to, uh, improve water quality.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loretty. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Riggles, seconded by Ms. Ellinbury. Any further questions or comments? Ms. McGrath?
I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Ms. McGrath first, and I'll come to, I'll come to you. Ms. McGrath?
Do we have someone on staff to help write grants and look for grants for us?
Uh, I'll defer that to the town manager?
Uh, my understanding, the pass has generally been done by department heads or by the town manager, or whoever the subject matter expert, for instance, the fire department handles most of their own. I think Mr. Dutton handled a number of them, um, so. I would say in terms of PFAS that he, um, he was instrumental in getting the town involved in the class act, for class action suits, specifically about PFAS, and our, and the, uh, attorney that's, uh, working on that on our behalf, um, estimates that we'll probably may, we may bring in two to three million dollars towards that effort, uh, when those settle, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Murphy? Okay. Uh, anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, eight-zero, thank you. Next up. Uh, Resolution RFY twenty-five dash zero-zero-seven, a resolution affirming Bridgewater as a welcoming community for all. Uh, again, uh, we kept this at a council level. I will, uh, defer to, uh, Counsel Murphy on, uh, where we at with the resolution tonight?
I defer to Counselor Chase.
I defer to Counselor Chase.
I'd like to make a motion to table the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion to table, seconded by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion, please?
Yes, so if I may, I would like to just, uh, briefly, as I can, just put a, somewhat of an end cap on the discussion so that we can, uh, wrap up loose ends and, and move forward. Um, uh, it's, really, I, I regret very much the fact that we have concluded the need to do this, to table the resolution, um, which has been, uh, a decision arrived at together with, uh, the other counselors who are, uh, sponsoring counselors of this resolution. But we concluded it really should be tabled at this time, because it's apparent that collectively, uh, the council does not favor passage and has been unwilling to, uh, consider amendment. So this impasse is unproductive, uh, and it has helped to further spark a lot of, uh, heated dialogue, uh, which isn't good for, uh, anyone involved, it's certainly not productive, and, uh, it's taking time and energy that we need to devote elsewhere. Just to end the discussion, uh, a resolution is a, a statement of principle, and that's really all it is. It's not a, a call to any specific course of action. And even before this resolution was introduced to the council in our last session, its meaning was already widely misinterpreted. Uh, the resolution has no suggestion of any kind of DEI agenda, it also has no suggestion of any inclination to, uh, declare the town a sanctuary city or any such thing. Misinformation circulated in online channels, which was greatly exaggerated and amplified by the efforts of an activist group in Boston, which had chosen to exploit the opportunity for its own purposes. At our last session, comparisons were drawn between this resolution and a similar measure from January of twenty sixteen, which has been displayed publicly in the lobby of this building for nine years. This resolution would represent a reaffirmation of the same principles proudly celebrated by the town council nine years ago, and which were so highly regarded that the document extolling them was framed and placed upon permanent public display. In my opinion, it's extremely regrettable that the town council of twenty-twenty-five cannot uphold and reaffirm that Bridgewater remains an inclusive community where all are welcome and safe from hate speech and verbal assaults arising from ethnic, cultural, or lifestyle differences. I'm confident, and let me underscore that, I am confident that a similar resolution will arise again and be presented to this council in the near future, whether by myself or whether by another counselor or by a member of the public. And as a personal matter, I would hope that when that occurs, that any such future resolution would present the very same language that was proudly adopted in twenty sixteen, and thereby challenge the current town council to demonstrate the courage and integrity to make the very same pronouncements that were made by their predecessors nine years ago. I thank you.
President?
Yes, Ms. Lindy?
And I would just like to say respectfully that that's what I suggested at the last meeting, that we reaffirm what we have downstairs. End of discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Ms. Riggles?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have some things to say, so please bear with me. I've had a lot of conversations the last two weeks, and I just want to get a few things straight and clear the air in a public forum that I wish I could have for the last two weeks, so. Uh, the realities of the situation regarding this resolution were at an all-time high for me personally. We don't need to rehash things that have happened, and I regret not speaking as clearly as I intended. I am very aware that black people were given the right to vote in eighteen seventy. I'm very aware of that. Unfortunately, my words did not match the emotion of the moment, and I truly meant to discuss the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, which means that when my grandparents bought land here in nineteen fifty-seven, they easily could have been discriminated against for the color of their skin, which is why I wanted everyone to know why it was such a big deal for me to love Bridgewater as my grandparents did, because Bridgewater Bridgewater as my grandparents did, because Bridgewater loved them at a time when others did not. To address some of the things that have been mentioned, because I am all for addressing elephants in the room, I was not told by an attorney to use the words racial tropes. I came up with that on my own. Further, I was not coached to pull the race card in that matter. Anyone who knows me, there are people in this audience that know me very well, I don't pull the race card, ever. It's not in my character. What people may see on a thread isn't always the full story. I challenge you to have a conversation with me about the messages, the 12 disgusting messages I personally received on Twitter where the N-word was used in every single one. Having to wait until this moment to make a public statement was personally very challenging for me and I appreciate those in the audience that have given me the encouragement to do so. We don't always get it right. We are human, just like everyone else. What was intended as something positive was not taken as such and I regret that. However, I do not, I can't sit here and say that what we did was wrong because in my eyes, Bridgewater is a welcoming community, but we also saw how unwelcoming it can be by what happened in the back corner of this room. I don't care if that person is on the side of the resolution or not, that behavior is unacceptable. If we are going to not stand for a reaffirmation of who we are, we must live up to what we say we are as a community. Finally, I said this to a resident during one of the many over 150 one-on-one conversations that I have had in the last two weeks. There is no such thing as a finished person. Every single one of us can improve, grow, and evolve over time. I challenge all of you to become the best that you can be because Bridgewater needs you and we can't do this. We just saw all of the things that our town needs. We can't do this without your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Any other council comments? Okay. So on the tabling motion, all those in favor of tabling it at this time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are tabled at this time. Next up, we have Order O F Y 25-044, contract ratification of the town manager. Again, we kept this at a committee level. This is to obviously ratify, extend the town manager to the point after her existing agreement expires on March 5th. And obviously, we've gone through the procedures to get it to this point here tonight. Do I have a motion to ratify the town manager's contract?
So moved.
Ms. Strigles, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on the matter? Mr. Lindy.
Question to you, to the town attorney. So now, the town manager will be a town of Bridgewater employee, other than what we did in the past, the two 90-day contracts. Does the town manager have full authority to appoint an assistant town manager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, actually, I then have a question.
Okay, please.
I don't know if I can ask it.
Then, then maybe you don't want to.
I do, I do want to ask it.
Okay.
I want to know, what I asked before when we hired Blythe to, under the other contract, would you make an appointment like that or would you leave it to the next manager?
So, just having that conversation is a violation of the charter, so I would advise her not to answer that because it is incredibly clear in the charter that the town council is not to weigh in on hiring decisions of town employees in any way, shape, or form. So, I would advise she not answer that. And I do think legally speaking, she absolutely has authority to hire an assistant town manager.
That's why I asked the two questions.
Sure.
Just wanted it on the record.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying the contract extension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. And then finally, Order O F Y 25-046, emergency order, an order to establish the voting procedure for the appointment of the town manager. Again, this was brought forth by Ms. Strigles and again, this was dealing with a situation where we had four candidates. We are now down to two, so I'm not quite sure at this point if the order is necessary, where we would probably make a motion for a candidate and have a, please go ahead.
Statement.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Due to our application pool decreasing from four to two, we should be able to follow a simple nominating procedure to give the candidates a proper vote. Just so the intent of the order was clear, the intent was to create a process that differed from the process that we all experienced when we went through the process of appointing a counselor to the seat that Council Loretty is sitting in. We, although are very happy that he has joined us, we all collectively agree that that process was pretty flawed. Not allowing every candidate that put their hat in the ring to have a proper vote felt wrong, in my eyes, and I felt to even the playing field, when we had four applicants, it made sense to do a ranked choice system where ultimately, we go through multiple rounds of vote until we get a consensus. That easily could have come on a first ballot. You never know. So, at this time, based on that, Mr. President, I would ask for a motion to withdraw the emergency order, given the pool of applicants has decreased from four to two.
Thank you. Motion to withdraw, I don't even think we need to vote on it. She can just withdraw the order?
She can withdraw the order.
Yeah.
So that will mean that you'll be following Robert's rules of procedure. So there will be a nomination and then a vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you. So we'll just withdraw the order at this time.
Could I ask? It has to be a majority then, in that case, right?
It does.
And that would be five councilors?
It does.
Thank you.
And if it's four and four, it fails, moves to the next one. If that fails, then it looks like the ad hoc committee is going to have to meet again, so.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. So, that concludes legislation for action. We do not have any old business, so we will move to some new business. First up on that is proposed zoning ordinance, D F Y 25-018, zoning map amendment, Business B and Resident C districts in the Bedford Street, Winter Street, and Flag Street areas. This was brought forward by Council Chase, so I'll defer to Council Chase for a little description of this.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this proposed zoning ordinance has been written by our planning department. It happens to relate to parcels that are located within my district for which I've been happy to bring this forward. I think to put it in simplest terms, we had a similar situation before the council, I think two years ago, when a certain portion of Main Street was actually divided into two zoning districts in such a way that was really very arbitrary. There was no particular reason for the zoning line, the border to have been drawn the way it was, and it did have potentially adverse impact for a number of residents of Main Street. And a councilor brought forward a resolution to propose zoning ordinance to change that. We did effectively change it in that case, and this is, in a sense, really a very similar situation. There's a stretch of business-zoned parcels along Broad Street. This would be near the intersection of Flag Street and heading north, which the business-zoned area for businesses immediately along Broad Street, the zone actually extends quite far to the east from Broad Street. Much, just to correct you, Council, I think you're on Bedford Street? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Bedford Street?
Yep.
And the zone for business development there actually extends considerably further to the east of Bedford Street than is either necessary or really intended. And so what this amendment is proposing to do would be to convert some of that area and parcels further to the east and resort them to residential-zoned area, which in fact is the use to which those parcels are put. It is a residential neighborhood. And the concern was really twofold, that, you know, were we not to do this, that there's the potential that business interests could seek to develop parcels that are essentially residential, in a residential area, you know, with things like warehouses or garages or some other activity like that, which wouldn't be particularly amenable to the existing neighborhood. And secondly, this change would also enable residents in that area where we propose the zoning to be changed to residential to take advantage of accessory dwelling units, which I think, as the councilors all know, is something that's been recently mandated by state law and which we are currently in the course of approving final amendments to our zoning to accommodate here in Bridgewater. So it was really, in a sense, it was really fortuitous that this came about at this time because those two advantages would be very promising for the residents of that area. And that's the story I can give you behind the proposed ordinance change.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. We're looking to refer this to the C E D and Planning Board jointly. I'll ask for a motion in a second for further discussion.
Second.
Ms. Strigles and a second by Mr. Chase. Any questions or comments? Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Who owns this property, all this property?
There are many owners.
Yeah.
There's quite a few parcels. I think if you consult the map that accompanied our ordinance tonight, you'll see that just by looking at it quickly by eye, I would guess there are probably 20 parcels that are potentially covered by this.
Is that the shaded area, Mr. Chase?
That's right, the shaded area.
So, does this benefits the property owners? Because now they can sell more houses on this property?
Well, I think so, because if you were a resident in that shaded area, this would protect your property and property interest against an unexpected construction of a commercial development of some kind, and you would also have the advantage of, should you choose, taking advantage of the accessory dwelling unit provision that we're about to adopt.
So they're breaking it up, so residents, there will be a residential house on the lots and then the residentials can have the units?
The uses would be strictly residential, that's correct.
So, it benefits the owners because now they can put more houses on the lot rather than one.
Well, I don't know what or how many, if any, of these are actually undeveloped and buildable lots. Frankly, it looks to me as though they are all, these are all existing homes.
Yeah. It's just creating more uniform residential zoning in that area.
I was just confused because you said it would stop from businesses to come in.
Well, right. In other words, so a business would not be able to raise an existing home and build a warehouse on that site.
Yeah, we don't want commercial mixed in within the residences, so it's creating some...
No, I was just wondering if they're cutting up more, they can have more homes than if, you know what I mean?
No, we're not changing anything to do with parcels.
Okay.
Size or...
I was just clarifying.
Sure. No, I know.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Loretty.
So yeah, to be clear, anything shaded would now be residential.
Correct.
There's a very large lot off of Winter Street that is currently opened up for development. Do we know if there's a project that's being proposed there right now? Because if we amend the zoning by right, they would be able to develop that land, that very large parcel, kind of in the middle, upper part of that page.
I don't know what that parcel is. I can't say that. There is a plan, which I think has been before the Planning Board with respect to a four, I believe it's a four-house residential subdivision.
So there's a development.
And I suspect that could be among the areas that would be considered for that. I know it's off of Winter Street, so that may in fact be the area.
Okay, so they, by right then, they would be able to build that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, so again, we have a motion, seconded to refer to C E D and Planning Board to vet this out. All those in favor of sending it to those boards, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Order O F Y 25-047, transfer order for the town manager's office. I'm going to say I'll ask the town manager for a brief description of this, please.
So as you recall, when the town manager left last September, we did some transfers to accommodate the outside consulting services for the acting town manager and gone through most of that and we are anticipating having a manager start, you know, a little bit later this fiscal year, so we need to make some transfers around so that we can fund that contract when that person starts and meet the obligations of the contractual work that we've already done so far this year, to get us through the end of the fiscal year, and those funds would come from the one-time stabilization fund.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We're looking to refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved.
Do so, seconded by Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That wraps up our new business for this evening. I will now go to some citizens' comments. And once again, I will reiterate that due to Masovan Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If you'd like to come up and speak, again, please state your name and address for the record and keep it to three minutes. Thank you so much. If you want to turn that this way a little bit and straighten it back out, you're welcome to do so. Thank you so much.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, probably I'll pull it down a little bit there. You pull the, pull the mic down.
The mic down, okay. Sorry.
There you go.
It doesn't cut it to my three minutes, right?
No, it's all right. We haven't started the clock yet. Name and address.
Catherine McDonald, two Oldfield Road. So this evening, the chief was talking about the fire station and he mentioned the forbidden word, "school shooting." One teacher, 33 kids, in a classroom. School shootings happen terrible, right? They get swept under the rug. Four years later, Bridgewater is on the news. We have 30-plus kids, 35, 36, it's now two years down the road, one teacher protecting 36 kids. It's a group effort, fire, police, teachers, admin. I'm a parent sending my child into a school every day, thinking to myself, "What if? What if that teacher's just mental capacity doesn't have it in them because they have 33 small children in their room that they have to protect?" They run through drills. You think my eight-year-old thinks anything of that? He's just excited to go to school every day, but we as the parent have to protect them. That came up tonight, I wasn't even planning on speaking, but that is, it brought a tear to my eye when somebody leaned over to me and said, "And our teachers protect them." Fire, safety, I get it, it's everyone, though. They're with them every single day. That also led me into listening to this water-in-sewer BS. Honestly, I want to see a breakdown as a citizen in this town, where we land infrastructure, where we land for what we need for a school. Dumb it down. There's other towns having two meetings a month to talk to their residents about what we need, how to get on the ballot. I want a breakdown of it. I'm working hard to make a petition, really hard. We're going nowhere. These parents are not leaving this room. We're not leaving. We are going to march up and down these streets, getting signatures to get on that ballot for this override, to be included, school, infrastructure, everything. This town is going down. I just bought a brand-new house. I'm not going anywhere either. So you're stuck with me, you're stuck with my crew of people. I'm lucky to have them, but you guys got to figure this out. You got to advocate for us. This isn't good. I, to everyone listening, on March 9th, you marched into that meet-and-greet and you let those town managers know what's coming. You asked for their support. You're there to support them, they're there to support you. You're not attacking, but the reality is scary, really scary, and you got to dumb it down for the citizens. We need to know what this override entails. If it doesn't entail everything we need, you're going to have an even bigger problem. People are going to be banging down doors. But you got to break it down. I'm sending my children to school scared. How is that... How is that flipping possible, living in Bridgewater, Massachusetts? It's unfair. And I just need you guys to step up to the plate. I don't need you to break tonight and revisit in four weeks. I need you to visit this tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. and setting the stage for what's going to happen with numbers and a clear vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else want to come up? Mrs. Hanson.
This seems tall. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just have some comments. I definitely was happy to hear the support of putting a hold on some building. We can't, we can't support what we have in town now. We can't keep on building, building, building. And I would really like to see that pursued by whoever it needs to be pursued. I was glad to hear that. As far as outsourcing water, I am concerned about Brockton Water, only because I work in Brockton and I work with a lot of people who live in Brockton, and they don't want to drink the water, so I would assume they would check the quality of the water wherever they outsource. I am looking forward to the March 9th meeting with the two candidates and seeing what they have to say. And the only other comment I have is I listen to people, "And with or without a resolution, respect begins at home." People need to be taught, learned by example. Parents have a responsibility, and it trickles up. And I've heard, heard some comments tonight, whether you agree with somebody or not, you have to be respectful of people. I don't necessarily agree with everything, but I'm not sitting here chatting. But I just want to remind everybody, respect begins at home. So please, everybody just respect each other. And, you know, I don't know how else to say it, but I am glad to see the Town Council is getting back to talking about issues for the town. And that was just bothering me. Respect begins at home. People need to just respect. It doesn't matter if we have a resolution or not, we just need to respect each other. And I appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else? Please, come on up, Ashley.
Ashley Mallard, Grange Park. Again, I just got really disturbed by the water presentation tonight. And obviously, I've been talking to you about schools, but behind the scenes, I'm sort of asking, is there a way to find these true numbers? So I do second the request for some very simplified numbers. You got, you got to make it really simple. If you need to understand how to present simple numbers, I can pull some of my math teachers in if we need to do a consultation on how to do a little lesson plan. I'm not kidding, happy to help. And if you need someone to create little images, give me the numbers, I'll get some math teachers, not me, math teachers on it. But I would like to call for a moratorium. I brought this up to some councilors before, and my, my fear is boiling right now because I know that there are zoning board meetings and planning board meetings that are discussing some major buildings. So how quickly, if a moratorium is needed, I know you can't answer this, but how quickly can it happen? And then is there a consequence placed on the town that if a moratorium is put in place on building, does that require the town to react and fix the problem that is causing the moratorium within a short period of time? I'll take my questions away. Thanks.
Thank you, Ashley. Anybody else? Please, come on up.
Donna Jewell, Keith Place. I came here tonight to learn a lot about the various issues, and my number-one issue or concern has been the Town Manager search. I was, I think I was the only one that attended every public ad hoc committee meeting that was held over the last several months because I was really interested in this, I invested in it. I think it's probably above and beyond any other topic that we're talking about, probably our number-one priority to get this right. I was deeply concerned to learn tonight that the rumor that had been going around that it was down to two candidates was confirmed. I had sat through many of the meetings where we heard we had 20, 25-plus candidates, then it was whittled down, and we had seven extremely capable individuals, according to their resumes, that were coming forward. Now that we're down to two, and I understand that things happen and people withdraw for various reasons, I think it's critical, and we owe it to everybody in this community, to do the best job possible and reopen that search. Paradigm has said they had over 25 resumes. I know they said that some fell into category one, two, and three, but I'm urging you to go back to that pool of candidates and find at least seven to 10 that you can look at and come back so the, the ad hoc committee will keep its commitment to the community that the full Town Council would have the opportunity to review four candidates. Reviewing two, I don't think, I think does a disservice to the community and does a disservice to our full Town Council members. I should be able to weigh in on all of them. And I learned tonight that Blight's contract had been extended, and I think that was through September, if I'm not mistaken. And I personally want to say, I think she's doing a fantastic job here and right now. And I don't see the need to rush into a choice under the conditions that we're operating in into this town right now, with critical things from the schools to the water to the roads, you name it. We have to get this one right. And I think we owe it to all of us and to you as councilors, to broaden the scope and relook at this before we rush into this. And then how can we get copies of the resumes of the two finalists that are on the table Do I put in a public record request in the morning? Is that how it goes, or?
To that, I think they can be publicly posted now that we've announced who the finalists are.
Okay. On the website?
I would imagine we can get it on the website.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome, Donna.
Steph Demilia, Harvest Lane. I was going to say a lot of the things that Donna just said, but one thing stuck out in my head was, when we had the community forum with Paradigm, that was on the 27th, I believe. And then two days later was the deadline to make sure your resumes were in. So that gave Paradigm two days to find candidates that, based on some of the questions and concerns we had, which was a little disturbing to me, for me. As far as the final seven, again, we heard bits and pieces of there was seven really good candidates that were going to make it to the final live interview process. Two, four made it, two are gone. So that would leave five. Perhaps reaching out to the three that were very good, that you interviewed live, and asked them if they would like to come back and be part of the process of an eight-person panel to be re-interviewed. I don't think that's being unreasonable. I do also think that this is a big decision made for the future of our town. Before I forget, I want to apologize for standing up and asking a question. And the only reason why I did that is because it seemed like Mr. Lynch was in a really big hurry to leave. And I wanted him to hear at least one concerned citizen ask for at least four, like they promised, for, for candidates, like they promised, and everybody agreed to it. That's about all I have to say, but I will say, we're very fortunate to have people like John Schlatt's. He's our fire chief. How lucky are we to have someone from the community that cares that much be at the helm? When I hear him speak, I can hear it in his voice how passionate he is about our town. It's hard to find someone that's going to be a Town Manager that knows nothing about our town, and especially coming into this, at this time, with all the issues we have. I said it before, there was a young lady in the red jacket who brought her little child to one of the meetings, and she was crying, and that hit home for me, because my kids are all big now. So she's right. That's a scary thought, to be pumping water into your kid that could possibly get, making them sick for life. Think about that for a minute. Do we have a Town Manager ready to take that on? Are the final two capable? Maybe they are, maybe they're not. But at least get four or five people, the way you can make a really good, solid decision for all of us. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Stefano. Dave, come on up.
Dave Gabriel, Elwood Crescent. I'd like to emphasize both what Donna and Stefano said, and just want to add one more thing, just on the tail end of what Stefano had said. It's my understanding that out of the seven, we had a Bridgewater resident. And to me, I understand that that one Bridgewater resident didn't have a lot of Town Manager experience, which is one of the reasons why he wasn't selected as the number four. But the one thing he does have is he has Bridgewater experience, which ties into the fact that are these candidates ready to walk in and address the water, the sewer, the roads, the budget, the town? That one resident has experience with being a Town Councilor, has experience being a Town Councilor President, has worked in the public forum, has worked with the Town Manager in this town in and of itself. So the fact that he does not have Town Manager experience, but has civic experience and has worked with Town Managers, he knows exactly what, what's coming. These other people might have Town Manager experience, but they don't have Bridgewater experience. So I highly, highly ask you to consider, especially the rest of that seven that's left, to come back in, to at least include that one Bridgewater resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Anybody else like to speak?
I'll make it super quick, it's late, and I apologize. I did want to just clarify something quickly. Sorry, Lisa Vazelle-Curley, Atkinson Drive. For anybody walking and for anybody that's left here, I do not work for the town of Bridgewater. There's a lot of comments being made. I'm sorry, I feel bad with my back to you guys, but there's a lot of comments. I understand the school, the roads, the water, there's a ton going on in our town that we need help with, that the town needs to deal with, which is why the flag polls was asked, I was asked to do that. So we weren't taking money from the town, so we're raising it from people that are interested in doing it. And the other thing I want to add is Keith Buell is my partner in this. And if anybody knows Keith well and myself well, his first big issue is he's a Montreal Canadiens fan, and clearly I'm not, and we get along really well, but also politically on this flag thing, we're very divided, he and I are. We want different things, but we compromise. We both know how to compromise. And we, you know, I, it's not necessarily the compromise that I want, but people making comments about a $25,000 gay pride flag is what we're doing. It's inappropriate, it's, it's negative. It came from that same Twitter account. I don't know who that person is. They need to mind their own business. But anyways, so we're working together, two people that very much differ in opinions on a lot of things, but we're going to work together and do what we think is good for the community. It might not be the compromise everybody wanted, but it's a compromise, and that's what I think we all need to work with. And on another note, four months till the 4th of July, which is also privately funded, not by the town, so hopefully you can all tell people that because we still get that confusion. Thank you for your second, you were the second person to donate for this year, so thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else like to come up? Ray, come on up.
Ray O'Jemmy on Alders Road. First, I just want to commend the councilors that sponsored this resolution. I'm sorry it went down. I understand why it went down, but they did good, and I want to credit them for sticking their necks out and doing it. The arguments against the resolution, I have to just make one comment. One of the arguments, I thought, I thought they're all weak, but the weakest was that you people have other things to do in town other than doing resolutions. You have roads and so forth. And I couldn't help think about Lyndon Johnson's comment about Gerald Ford. He said that Gerald Ford couldn't walk and chew gum at the same time. You people can walk and chew gum at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else like to come up? For citizens' comments. Go on, what? Anybody else? MJ?
No, not at all. Also, for anybody else in the room, if you needed it to be adjusted, we easily put it down like that. Just a future reference for anybody that's open forum. Mr. President, Members of the Council, MJ Spigone, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Wrote memorization at this point. I did want to note, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, we do have one space left on the Finance Committee. Just recently, we had Mrs. Haley Basowitz appointed to our committee. I look forward to having her on my group. And Councilor Lyndy, I am hopeful that we can at least have another joint meeting again. It was very efficient, it was very helpful, and it made it a lot more easier to get our stuff done. So I surmise, I got to the meeting a little late, however, I managed to cut into the discussion or at least presentation by Mr. Lynch. I too share the concerns of other members in this room about the process itself. Going from four candidates just down to two at seemingly the last minute is kind of a concern. And the fact that we had a wide pool of 27 candidates is fantastic that we got that many people that actually apply. You know, even with our reputation, you're not sure if you're going to get anything. Pleased to know that we had those members of candidates. But the fact that we had four candidates and now they've dropped to two, while it probably can't be helped, it can't be controlled, I echo the sentiments of my resident, fellow residents about possibly having another candidate or another two candidates be added to that pool. It seems unfair to the two that are now, basically, seemingly, we do an up or down vote on them, that that is the nature of the situation. It feels like there should be at least due deference to two others that may have actually still had the same skill and temerity to actually take part in the interview process. And I think we should afford that to them. And if all else fails, restart the process again. Again, take this very seriously. This is a position that has not been open in the town in at least 11 years. Mr. Dunn was our longest-serving Town Manager in history, so it behooves us to select someone who will be willing to stay for the long term, whether they are a Town Resident or they could potentially move here. I personally would love to see it. Having been a person who has been dedicated to the town myself for almost 20 years, I'd like to see that same dedication be put forward to a Town Manager. So any other topics to discuss? I missed out on a bunch of other stuff that happened earlier. But I am reminded of an article I wrote for The Town Observer, a very long, extinct newspaper that was published by a gentleman named Ed Sunshine. I wrote an article, I believe it was titled, "A Call to Civility." There were some very tumultuous moments in the last decade prior to us getting our Council Manager form of government. And I asked people to consider the options of being a community that is welcoming and inclusive in other ways, but also to ask that folks stop going at each other's throats, metaphorically, because it doesn't help anybody. Attacking one person versus another person is pointless. It serves nothing more than to cause discord and pain and suffering. And as a result of that article I wrote, those many years ago, I would say this. If you need to speak, you speak as a courteous, courteous human being, and you treat everyone with the dignity and respect that you expect of yourself and to others. It serves no purpose to harass, denigrate, or discriminate anyone at any point at any time. And the one thing that helps our community be strong is giving at least civil respect to one another. I provide that as a citizen, as an official myself, and it's just the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, MJ. Anybody else like to come up and speak? No, once, going twice. All right. Thank you for all those that came up again to speak here this evening. We will now move on to Council comments. I will start with Mr. Loretta to my right.
I have open office hours this coming Monday. Today's Tuesday, right? It's still Tuesday. From 4:00 to 6:00 here in Council chambers. I would encourage residents to come and talk about schools, budget, Town Manager search, whatever they like to discuss, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here next Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Loretta. Ms. Ellenbrook.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment that our citizens need to contact our state rep in order to get more money for our town. We really need the money, and we really need the muscle of citizens contacting the state people for something to happen. Doesn't work if you just have one town official call up, the kind of thing. Second thing is, I would say with regard to the resolution, that we should conduct ourselves according to the golden rule and do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Then I also wanted to comment that I too think that we need to reopen the process on the Town Manager. I have been disturbed by the process and would welcome... I have been disturbed by the process and would welcome a recalibration. And lastly, in terms of the building moratorium, I would ask if the citizens would be interested in starting a petition for a building moratorium. That would be up to the citizens whether they would want to present such a thing, but just a thought. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the people that came out and presented tonight. Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm, Chief for the Fire, and Azufer, Water Soar, and Roadways. I think they were great presentations, it was a lot to take in tonight, but thankful that they did, and thankful that it's recorded and I can go back and review it. But thank you to the citizens that stuck around, spoke at the beginning, and spoke at the end tonight. I think there's a lot of work to be done, and I think that's evident, so I don't think there's a lot to say, I just think there's a lot that we need to do and start taking action on, so we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Lyndy.
Just want to say and thank all the residents that are still here. It was a long night, and I appreciate your perseverance and thoughtfulness. I happen to agree with the residents that have spoken about the search process. I haven't been comfortable with the search process from day one. I know the committee did some good work, but I do not believe we should choose between two candidates. I think there were other candidates that made it through the seven. I think the resident of the town that I'm aware of was a good candidate too, and I do not want to pick between two candidates. I will tell you that I had the same situation in Massasoit, where I was on the, like an ad hoc committee. The Board of Trustees picked the president. The president did not do well at the college. The president left the college in a mess. We hired another president that fixed it all, okay, but we ended up being down to two. And being down to two wasn't the position that we wanted to be in, and the Board of Trustees made the decision. So I do not like the process, I do not like getting it last minute. We're all elected equally, all nine of us, whether there's a subcommittee or not. And I also think we have a state senator that we need to find out, put him on the MIA list, and figure out how we can get him here. We know that Dennis Gallagher will help us, but he's a freshman rep, so is the senator. It's not the solution from the state. We've got to come up with the solution, and we've got to get going on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyndy. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think firstly, I would just like to thank Lisa for her comments, and certainly Lisa and Keith, both for their work in putting together a tremendous fundraising idea with respect to the funding of the flag polls. I think that that's remarkable, but really, given the past experience of those two individuals, I think it shouldn't be remarkable. We know fully very well what an incredible job they do each and every 4th of July in this town. And so, fundraising is certainly something that they, that's their forte, and I'm really thrilled to think that they have chosen to take this on. I haven't had a great experience, a degree of experience in becoming acquainted with Lisa, except through the annual fundraising for the 4th of July, but I did work with Keith Buell for about 11 years in an office in Boston. So Keith and I, in that respect, certainly go back a long way, and I know him to be just a stellar individual and an incredibly hardworking guy, and he shows it all the time. But again, I just wanted to thank you both for what you've done and what you continue to do. I think it's absolutely admirable. I'll be looking forward to purchasing several bricks. Thank you. Just quickly, otherwise, with respect to the comments, with respect to the Town Manager Search Committee, it's regrettable, there's no question, that two of the finalists, for their own reasons, had chosen to withdraw. We are left with two. Even were we to consider opening the search up again, I feel very confident that we would lose those two right away. And I couldn't blame them, because if they had been told that they're the final two candidates, and suddenly, oh no, you're two out of five now, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be likely to be, in my estimation, willing to undergo that process any further. It would signify to them that the town really doesn't know what it wants in the first place. And as Mr. Lynch indicated earlier, the qualified candidates for this job are really very few. This is a very narrow field of people in the Commonwealth who are qualified to do this work and have the experience of doing this work. Were we to initiate some reopened search now, who do you think is going to be available to apply? All the people with even the remotest interest or qualifications have already applied, and they've already good, they were the 27 people. We're not going to suddenly pull new people out of the woodwork, you know, who didn't know about it before, because the bushes were beaten to find these people, and 27 were found. And through a process that was very well organized and very well managed, I would say, by Mr. Lynch, we were able to whittle that down to the seven whom we spent a full, I think, eight hours here in this building on a recent Saturday to interview, allowing them basically an hour each for us to get acquainted with them and to learn what their qualifications and ideas were. So, I don't frankly see it as feasible to make the option, to choose to reopen the search. If, God forbid, we have to do it, that's what we have to do. But I think by doing it electively, by choosing to do it now, I think we would be waving goodbye to the two candidates we have, who are in fact the two most qualified of the candidates who remain, of our final group of finalists. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Riggles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo sentiments of residents, fellow councillors. The rumor mill, as we know in this town, is very, very potent, and hearing about the lack of applicants that we would have through the rumor mill versus through the proper channels was disheartening. However, coming in and getting the resumes today, and having the ability to glance over them and read probably 75% of the packet prior to people arriving for a town council meeting, I will say that the two candidates that we do have are highly, highly qualified and of the utmost regard. So, when everyone has the opportunity to be able to review the same resumes that we're looking at, I hope that some people that are feeling reluctance now feel a little source of confidence later. In regards to my standard comments, I wanted to first and foremost thank everyone that came out tonight. It is an undaunting task to sit here for as long as all of you have, and I appreciate people staying in the room, because if you're not here for our comments, it kind of defeats the whole purpose. So, I really do appreciate those that decided to stay. And after everything with the resolution, I am a very forward-thinking person. I don't like to dwell, I like to move forward, and I like to be as purposeful as possible. So, I did shortly after announce two office hours. The first one will be this Sunday, March 9th, 9:30 to 11 at the juice mill. So Kendra, the owner of the juice mill, is a friend of mine and has graciously given me her back corner to meet with constituents, and I will also be meeting March 22nd, 9:30 to 11, same location. So whether you're my constituent in District 1 or not, it doesn't matter, I want to hear from anyone who wants to speak with me. If those times don't work, please contact me. As I mentioned before, over 150 people have in the last two weeks, so I'm not hard to find. Next, I would like to just thank the Career Services Department at BSU. I had the privilege of being part of a roundtable discussion regarding my role as a town councillor. As an alum, it's always great to be able to give back to an alma mater that has given me so much, so I just wanted to thank them publicly for having me today. And finally, just for a little bit of levity, I feel like things have been so heavy, and we really missed the mark of not being able to congratulate Connor James for making it to the battle rounds of The Voice. When I was watching The Voice that night, and all of a sudden I saw Bridgewater, Massachusetts, first of all, I recognized him, and I was like, why do I recognize him? And then I heard Bridgewater, Massachusetts. What an amazing opportunity for our town to really show who we are as a town by maybe coming and supporting somebody that has brought a lot of joy to a lot of people in this town. So congratulations, Connor, we're pulling for you, and I'm sure we'll all be voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggles. Great comments. Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to respond to some of the false remarks that were said about me on Rainham Bridgewater Facebook page. I understand the union, because my childhood was submerged in the union, because my father was president at the candle company in Walpo. Bridgewater is truly blessed to have BSU in its community. The college is a wealth of resources, the campus is beautiful, and most importantly, it's not a potty school. To ignore a true partnership with the college is just foolish. I proposed having BSU students internships at our schools. These students can assist in classrooms as par professionals, or in any other area that a student is qualified for. And the volunteers that I spoke of is the town's veterans volunteer program. There are positions open for proctors in the schools, and these are non-union positions. Volunteers are valuable, they should be shown respect and not spoken of as nuisance, especially if our veterans. So I hope I clarified that I didn't say throw volunteers into the school system. If anyone has a question, I'll be glad to answer it, and I meet with the BSU College, the Vice President of Internships tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. I'll close it. I would like to definitely just address a little bit more, obviously, the comments being made on the process of finding the town manager. Obviously, it's been a long road. I mean, he left back in August, and here we are in, you know, March. It takes time. It's a process, every process is different. But I think we came up with a good process, we came up with an ordinance that laid out the process. We tried to engage the community at every level possible with feedback. We did online surveys, we did a meeting with Bernie, the representative, at the senior center to get more feedback. And we're also setting a meet and greet to meet these last two candidates. In the end, would I like to see more candidates? Certainly. You know, we were planning, we had a range in the ordinance of three to five. Wasn't locked in to any particular number. But in the end, the top four that we had picked, two did drop out for whatever reason. But as Mr. Chase said earlier, the two that we do have remaining were the top two candidates that the ad hoc committee thought were the best candidates coming forward. And again, if we try to push the envelope and bring others back that we already went through and found they just weren't as good a candidates as the top four that we pushed through, so why are we going to go back and pull back a few other candidates that didn't make that cut in the round anyway, and go through the process of an interview? It just doesn't make sense. You wouldn't do that in business world, you wouldn't do that in any other world. So we have the top two candidates that we have. I hope that the townspeople, when they meet these individuals, will be cordial, will be respectful, and ask good thoughtful questions about what they can do to help our town. Because in the end, if we do lose these two candidates, then we will be definitely starting all over again. And then we're going to run into a lot more problems in that process. Cost factors, our current town manager only has certain limitations on how long she can work for us, so now we might be going back and looking at another interim town manager until we find a town manager to fill the seat. So, it's not as easy as you might think it is to go backward. We can't go backward, we have to go forward. And we have two wonderful candidates that could certainly fill the seat and do the job that we need to do for the town of Bridgewater. So get to know these individuals when you meet them, if you go and meet them next weekend on Sunday, and ask good, good quality questions, and hopefully we can maybe choose one of those individuals as our next town manager. But again, we can't go backward, we need to go forward. That's all I have to say. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sir, move. Mr. Lyndy, second. Mr. Chase. All those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.